Good evening and welcome to the Calabasas City Council Meeting of August 25th, 2021. It's now seven of 5:00 PM. This, tonight, I'm joined by Mayor Pro Tem Maurer, Council Members Kraut, Shapiro, and Weintraub, as well as staff. This meeting is being conducted utilizing Zoom teleconferencing. The live stream of the meeting may be viewed on the CTV, CTV Channel 3, and/or online at www.cityofcalabasas.com/CTVLive. If you plan to provide public comment, please press raise hand if you're joining via Zoom, or star nine if you're joining via phone, and star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and the city you live in. You'll be allowed three minutes to address the City Council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. In the event a quorum of the City Council loses electrical power or suffers an internet connection outage, not corrected within 15 minutes, the meeting will be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be continued to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council. Any other agenda items the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. Pledge of Allegiance will be led once again by Mari Hernandez.
Please stand and join me inside of your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I may have motion to approve the agenda with the note, Kenden, that we are moving one of the items out of order.
Don't move.
Wait, Kenden, are we still moving that item out of order?
That would be helpful, Mayor, if we could, and that could just be at any point earlier in the agenda after, after the presentation or after consent.
Okay, so this is the item, is this 12?
The cost allocation plan, correct.
Okay, item 12 will be moved after the CPA, because we have someone who's, who's the consultant who needs to go to another meeting. So with that, Mary Sue, you made the motion, is someone seconding it?
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut.
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro.
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub. Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Maurer. Yes.
Where's?
Yes.
Mayor Masaja.
Aye, okay. We did meet in closed session prior to our meeting, and let me turn to the city attorney and tell me if there's anything we need to report out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session and considered three items. First, a conference with the real property negotiator regarding 27040 Malibu Hills Road, Calabasas. No report of action taken. Second, conference of legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation. No report of action taken. Third, conference of legal counsel regarding existing litigation. But at the time the agenda was filed, disclosure of the case name would have jeopardized service of process. Since then, the case has been served against the city. This is the Building Industry Association of Southern California v. City of Calabasas case, LA Superior Court, and the City Council provided direction to defend the case. That is it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, um, we have a presentation starting at, now with the Clean Power Alliance. I think we need to bring some people into the room, please. And there's a PowerPoint presentation that we could gear that up. I know there's been a revised PowerPoint, just to let the community know, there's a new PowerPoint presentation that has been amended and has been posted on our website, Mari, as I understand it.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. It's been updated.
So...
We're bringing the presenter, Sharita.
And is Ted Bardacki coming in too?
Let me see if Ted is there.
I see him.
There he is.
Okay, sir, some follow-up questions for him too. Okay. Just let me know when they're here.
So Sharita's in. Let's see. There it is. We have issues, for some reason, they're not coming up.
All right, well, then let me do this. As you're here, you can introduce yourself and, and I, as I understand, you were going to give the power presentation anyways, PowerPoint, and then Ted comes in to answer questions, and so be it. If not, then we'll just ask you the questions. Go ahead, Sharita.
Sounds good. Good evening. Thank you very much for having me, Mayor, council members. My name is Sharita Coffelt, and I'm the External Affairs Director for Clean Power Alliance. I'm pleased to be here this evening to talk about the transition to 100% green power. Um, this evening, I'm going to share a little bit about the, the transition, when it's going to happen, what exactly it is, specifically what the residents' options are, how they, how they execute those options and take advantage of them, how they learn more about them, what our outreach plan is to make them aware of all these options, and then, and then I will start by just reintroducing CPA and just refreshing on who we, who we are. Next slide, or is the PowerPoint up yet?
Are you able to share your screen? With the PowerPoint?
I don't, I don't see it yet.
Okay, so you want me to share the screen? Okay, hold on.
Sure.
If we have a problem, maybe the staff have it queued up so we can show it?
Mayor, I am looking for that. Sharita, do you have that, or do you want me to look on?
Actually have it ready. I can show my screen.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Let me know when you see it, please.
It's up.
Okay, great. All right, so, um... All right, so Clean Power Alliance is an electricity supply provider offering clean renewable energy. Um, we work in tandem with SoCal Edison to provide the energy that your residents and businesses use to power their homes and offices. We purchase the clean power and Southern California Edison delivers it. SoCal Edison sends your monthly bill, which includes your SCE charges for your electricity delivery, followed by your CPA charges for your electricity supply and generation. Note that CPA is not an added fee. It simply replaces the SCE supply and generation charges on your bill. So who does Clean Power Alliance serve? So, Calabasas is in good company. We have 31 other municipalities in our alliance. These are all forward-looking cities and counties that, that banded together to join their purchasing power so that they could purchase clean energy at competitive rates, and it also benefits their community. Right now, we serve approximately 1 million customer accounts representing 3 million residents and businesses across Southern California. So at CPA, the clean future, clean energy future is here, and the reason why we say that is because we provide more 100% green energy plans than any other electricity provider in the nation. And what that means is that we are reducing more than 1 million tons of greenhouse gases annually because we're using clean energy as our sources versus other carbon-based energy sources instead. While we're doing this, we're creating about 2,500 jobs, local and green, good jobs, reliable decarbonization, and one other benefit is that there is local accountability with local benefit with our revenues reinvested through our local programs into the communities that we serve, such as Calabasas. And before I get started with the specifics of the transition, I would be remiss if I did not take some time just to talk a little bit about energy rates and, you know, in particular. You know, over the past couple of years, we've seen them rising across the entire state, and a lot of times it's outside of our control. And when I say "our," I'm talking about the collective "our" in this room. The cities, CPAs, it doesn't matter whether you're with CPA or SCE, everyone's rates are increasing because a lot of the, the increases are due to national, regional, and local events, such as wildfires, paying for the damages, and also paying for future mitigations. Reacting to the spikes in energy, energy prices after events like, you know, the energy shortage that happened in Texas. So those type of, those type of events end up impacting all of us, and unfortunately, not even just in Southern California. Northern California feels that pain as well. Um, I will, I will say that at Clean Power Alliance, we are working to be much more stable in our rates over the next, over the next year and a half. It seems as though we anticipate SCE is expected to change their rates eight times between October 2020 and January 2022 versus one rate change that's initiated by CPA, so. Um, now going into the actual default rate change, um, the specifics are on October 9th, we will start our transition. Calabasas will be transitioning to 100% green power. And this is really, this is really great news. And what it means is that renewable energy sources like the sun and wind will be used to produce the electricity that powers homes and businesses in Calabasas. This move will reduce greenhouse gas emissions by almost 40,000 metric tons each year, and that's equivalent of planting almost a million trees and removing almost 13,000, or over 13,000 cars from the roads each year. CPA will work with Calabasas staff to clearly communicate the changes to customers with the financial impacts and their options, as well as the benefit to the environment, and so that your community, your residents and your businesses can make an informed decision about which option is right for them based on their values and also based on their individual financial situations. The default change is scheduled to take place on each customer's meter read date in October to coincide with the change from summer, which is higher rates to winter when the rates are lower. Um, just, this, this slide is talking about the power of choice. So while the city is changing, the city has made the forward-looking decision to change the default rate, it does not take away the power of choice from the resident. They still have that choice. In fact, all of the choices that were previously made outside of default, so if a resident took action to change their default rate, that rate still, that, that choice will still stand. And so they, that, they won't have to re, re-decide that rate. However, if they're currently on the default choice and they don't want to participate in 100% green, they have a couple of options. They can stay with CPA and go down to 40% lean power, or lean power, which is 40% clean power. They can do 50% clean power, and then, or they can opt out of CPA and go to SCE. And for a comparison, and this is just kind of a general comparison of the rates between each of the different levels, you have SCE currently being the lowest cost, which is about $100. You have CPA lean, which would be $6. If theirs was, if SCE's was $100, CPA lean would be 106. CPA clean would be 107. And to be 100% green would be $110. And so that's just for comparison, so you have some context, context overall. If you go, go to the next slide, what you'll see is what we will actually be promoting whenever we communicate this change to the public. We will be promoting the CleanPowerAlliance.org/Compare website, which actually sends the residents and businesses to our website, which gives them the option to type in their own, their information and find exactly how this change would impact them. And so they can get real-time information on what the impact would be to them financially. And so that's the one website that we're going to be promoting, promoting the most frequently on all of our communications so that they are aware of their options. And on that same website, you see another screenshot to your right of the screen, which is, basically, they have the option right there on that page to opt out if they don't want to stay with CPA. We realize, and we've heard the council, we know that it's important that, that the residents and businesses have the choice, but also are able to exercise their choice easily, and we don't want to make it hard for them to do that. On that same topic, there are several different ways to connect with CPA. So like I said, you have the website, which we just talked about. The other way is email. And this is one thing, there are very few organizations that will let you email them to change your plan because they know how easy that is. But CPA, we will let you do that. You can email us, and we'll call you back and work with you to go through your options and help you understand the impact, and then help you exercise your option. And then, if you prefer the phone, we also have customer support. And we will be promoting all of these options on the postcard that we mail out, as well as social media, and the newsletter and press releases that we send as well, so that people not only have an option for their rate, but they have an option for how they, how they contact us as well. Another thing that we'll be really pushing hard on is our, um, making people aware of our bill assistance programs. We have a whole suite of programs available, and these programs range from everyone from, you know, income-impacted to people who've just gotten behind on their bill because of COVID, to actually people who don't necessarily have, have a financial need, but they have the ability to respond to peak demands and reduce their electricity and get incentives up to $200 a year for just doing that. And so we're promoting that as well so that, say, someone really does care about the environment, and they want to go to 100% green, but they also want to find out how they can best offset the cost increase. Well, we want to help them do that, and that's something that if they call us, we'll be able to kind of go through the options with them as well. Finally, our outreach timeline, what you see here is a progressive timeline. We're going to be doing all we can between now and October to promote this change, the, the positive components of the change, as well as the financial impacts in all transparency and, and all, and make sure that they understand the options. We'll be using social media, we'll be using our website, and e-newsletters, as well as postcards and press releases, and we'll be using both Clean Power Alliance channels and also working with Calabasas city staff, and they'll be sharing the information in their channels as well. So we'll be doing everything we can to get the word out. With that said, that's the end of my presentation, and I'm very happy to open it. I appreciate your attention, and thank you all for making the choice to go to 100% green, and I'm happy to take any questions you have at this time.
Okay, um, if we could just take down the presentation for a moment, well, actually, let me see if I can get... Okay, so if there's members of the audience who wish to speak on this item or provide public input, can we, um, can you please raise your hand at this time? Because we're going to go on, otherwise, I see a couple. So why don't we start with Julie Fullerton, we'll bring, and I noticed that Ted Bardacki has joined us as well. Ted, um, when we're done with this comment, maybe if you had anything else to add, I'll let you speak. But Julie, you're here now, so go ahead. Name and...
Sorry, I, actually, it's Andy Schrader masquerading as my wife.
Okay.
Apologies for that. So, you know, if you've been tracking the insane floods around the world like I have for the last month, we've had major catastrophic floods in China, Europe, Venezuela, Cameroon, and Africa, and then in March in Australia. And if you're keeping track, that's every continent, if you include Tennessee, Flagstaff, Utah, all of those places in, in North America. And then, that's every continent except Australia, which is, is melting. And then you add to that all the crazy wildfires, you know, we're about to lose Lake Tahoe. It, it's, the climate impacts are, are making me truly, not remotely exaggerating, frightened for the future of our, our kids. So, given all that, I just wanted to call in and say thanks again to the council for strong leadership in taking the 100% renewable default. Really, really important time to be doing that, and I really appreciate that you've taken this step. I appreciate the Clean Power Alliance bringing all the plans we asked for back a few months ago in terms of bill assistance and the outreach. And, um, anyway, good work, looking forward to it, and thanks again.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you for coming. Why don't we, Ted, before we bring in the next person, did you want to say something? I skipped you over.
That, that's okay. Thank you, good evening. Sharita said, said most of it. I just wanted to say that we're, you know, really committed to making sure that people understand their choices, the impacts, both environmentally as well as financially, and are, you know, really just here to answer questions, take input on, on the outreach plan. I also did want to just know that I, I hear from Sharita that the two Michaels are doing great work, both in terms of coordinating as well as, uh, uh, you know, providing input into the outreach plan. So, um, okay, thanks, and just happy to answer questions, uh, if, in the unlikely event that Sharita can't handle it.
Okay, and Ted, did you want to introduce yourself in your title?
Oh, sorry, I'm Ted Bardacki, I'm Executive Director of Clean Power Alliance.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
So we'll bring in Whitney Schwartz next. Okay. You're muted?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Fantastic, all right. I'm so pleased that the City Council moved the 100% renewables forward, and I'm looking forward to hearing the, I enjoyed hearing tonight's plan and hearing the rollout, especially given that the United Nations IPCC, the Climate Code Red Report last week. Everyone really needs to dramatically step up their climate emissions reductions efforts. I'm excited that we are leading the way to 100% clean and renewable energy, and I am proud to live in Calabasas. I'm so very proud to be a resident here. And I thank the City Council members who supported this, and I appreciate all your efforts for a cleaner, better future for not only Calabasas, but the planet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And let me turn to Mary Sue, who's our liaison on this. Did you want to add anything, Mary Sue, before we take council member comments?
No, I, um, I'm just so excited about coming to this point. This is probably the most significant step that Calabasas can take in the short term to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, which we must do. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased that we made it to this point. I do want to acknowledge staff also, Michael McConville and Mike Russo, and of course, our city manager and Sharita, for helping and us to break it down into simple terms. You said, if you, if you don't want to join this movement to 100% green energy, which will be another rate increase, and we already heard how Edison, who delivers the, the energy, has been raising rates due to a number of factors. You have choices, you have choices to opt down or opt out or move back to Edison. So I'm, I'm hopeful that the residents of Calabasas will see the wisdom of going to 100% green energy and that they'll support this and, and stay with us. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Alicia, I see your hand up.
Hi, can you hear me?
You know, your voice has been very faint online. I, I can hear you, but...
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, but it's still faint.
Okay, I'll log back in after this. Can you hear this question at all?
Yes.
Okay, um, thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to know if you could recap again. If people do not opt out by October, what happens if after a few bills, they realize they just can't do this, even though they might want to support the cause? What happens if in December, people are overwhelmed?
They can still opt out. They can opt out at any time. They can exercise their choice to opt out.
Thank you. So there's no penalty after October?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, and James, I'm going to log back in.
Actually, your voice got much better as you were talking. I don't know, maybe it kicked in or something.
Okay, I'll hang on.
Um, Peter.
Yeah, thank you. I want to join the others in saying I'm really proud of our city, and I'm proud of the Clean Power Alliance and all the great work that we're doing here. I'm really excited that we have this move towards 100% clean power. I do have a couple of questions because we are a very affluent city, but we do have some people here that might not be in the financial position to participate here like, like others. And so we need to make sure that we give them the tools that they need to make their decisions. I was a little confused. We had a presentation before where the lean power from CPA was a lower rate than the SCE rate, and what we just saw moments ago is that the lean power rate is 6% more. Are those the current figures, and are we sharing those with the community somehow?
Those are the current figures, and we will share, it'll be on our website, and we'll share all the information. I know that the, the, in February is whenever, we did have the lowest rate since we started operation until February, when actually SCE increased the PCIA fee, which actually impacted our customers more. At that point, that's when our rate became higher than theirs.
Okay, and I understand these are electricity rates. They're going to vary, and at some point in time, you might be higher and you might be lower than SCE. And our customers are just going to have to pay attention to that, as they would any other program that they have options for. But in trying to make it easy on them, I saw that the opt-out page required them to enter their SCE account number. Is there any way that that website would allow them to use their address instead of their account number? Or do they have to go find their SCE bill to fill that form in?
I'm going to try this, but may Ted, you may know this a little bit more about this. What I, what I keep hearing is that some people, there may be more than one account with an address, so you actually have to use your account to be able to make that decision.
That, that's, that's correct. An address could pull up several different accounts, and we, we operate on that, that account business. So, um, there are some complex commercial accounts that actually have uh, multiple service accounts across many properties. If they're in that case and they try to go to the website, they'll actually be directed to the call center because we want to make sure that we capture all the properties and, and their election that way. But that's why you can't do it by address.
Okay, it sounds like an option for residential to do it by address, might be something to look into in the future. Just, uh, you know, we want to make it convenient for everybody. Again, I'm, I am strongly encouraging everybody, if they can, to stay with the 100% green power. I know I will be. I know that Calabasas is a... Uh, I know that Calabasas as a community can definitely support this, but we got to make sure that we're protecting those that might not be in the position to do so. And so my last question, I think, would be, you mentioned social media and mailings and stuff. Can you give us an idea of how many outreach pieces you have coming out there? I noticed that social media was supposed to be August. We're almost done with August. What have you done so far? And what should we see in the future?
So we'll be doing weekly social media posts starting starting at the end of this week. We are going to wait until we get finished with this presentation so that we can um, we could include any of the messaging suggestions in those posts. But we'll include several social media posts on a weekly basis. And then the postcard will be done. There's thirty, there's one thirty days before, so it'll be out the first week of September. And then there's one thirty days after, which will be mailed to all the residents. There will be, you know, several social media posts a week um throughout, you know, the next two months, and then newsletter posts. And this, these are for not only on Clean Power Alliance channels, but also in the city's channels as well. So we'll be doing double duty to make sure that as many residents see these messages as many times as possible, because we all know the rule that you literally need to see things and hear things like six times before it actually starts to sink in.
All right, fantastic. That's all the questions I have. I'm really proud of our city. I'm proud of the Clean Power Alliance. And Ted, you're correct. Sharita's got it covered. We don't need you.
Okay, David.
Thank you. And thank you, Sharita and Ted, and uh our staff as well, the Michaels and our city manager for bringing this forward to us today. And uh it's it is a great day for our city. Uh, and it's a wonderful thing our city council has done. And uh, just so proud of the entire community uh for embracing this. I did want to mention that when we voted on this, when it came to us, I don't think any of us, I certainly didn't anticipate that SoCal Edison was going to have eight rate increases over two years or two in this year. Certainly, we didn't uh, we didn't know that. And so now that we're aware of that, I just want to clarify, uh, Peter already asked you about the thirty, it was thirty-eight percent, now it's forty percent. The change from saving one to two percent to paying a little more. That's that's the the only change that we're seeing now, correct? From prior presentations.
And I may need your help there since I wasn't here for prior presentations. I but I do believe that's the that's the major change there.
Yeah, yeah, I would say there's 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 the major change is that uh that lean power as 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 uh Peter mentioned um is more expensive. We had the lowest rates in in the region for three years and then uh markets sort of took over. I I will um note that the one other, I think it's a small change. Um, but I will note for the record that we talked about a nine percent differential between uh uh the SCE rates and the hundred percent green. Um, and again, because of the market events that Sharita spoke about, we're now at ten percent. Um, so uh uh you can decide whether that's major or not, but I did want to be uh transparent about that was the other change.
Thank you, Ted. And and just to clarify, if I'm asked right, the difference between the SCE rates versus the lean is seventy-two dollars a year. The the moderate would be eighty-four and for the hundred percent, uh, one hundred and twenty a year to the residents or to of Calabasas, correct?
That's 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 for a typical customer. Um, I I will say, and and I know um the mayor has been, you know, pretty uh uh adamant about this. There is a wide variety of experiences um in terms of uh uh consumption in Calabasas. And Peter's talked about it at the last meeting as well. Um, your average uh uh consumption is higher than normal or not higher than the average in in uh Southern California territory. But that average is very skewed by a few numbers of very, very, very large users in um in your city. Um, so it's you're one of the hardest cities to talk about what the typical customer is. So um, that's why we prefer to talk sometimes in percentages rather than the absolute dollars, but your math is correct.
Okay, thank you. And I understand completely and have those same concerns. A couple of questions from residents who've asked me. I'll ask you so it's out there. Uh, SCE rates are going to raise yet again. They're going to keep raising, rising for a couple, uh, at least a couple of times into twenty twenty-two. Does that affect, other than their increase, affect or change your rates in any way, shape or form?
No.
Right. I just want to put it out there. And then the second is those who've already opted out in our city. Let's say they're completely opted out. They're with SCE uh or whatever their source chooses to be. Do they have to go on and log on again now to opt out? The answer is no, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, again, I it's not for me. It's for residents who are asking this. And so I want to put it out there very clearly. Uh, getting it directly from you. So I, again, I am thrilled we're doing this. I am very proud of our city. Uh, it's a great step. Hope others will follow. And the one thing I talked about when we first approved this and I voted for it is outreach. And I see the plan now, which is wonderful. I want our city to do everything we can to make sure every resident gets a great deal of public notice on this to be intelligent and make an intelligent choice as to what they're doing going forward. Thank you again. Thank you.
Okay, so I just have a couple of things. First, um, one of the tools in what we just saw was to calculate your own your own household expenses, which you should take advantage of if you're a member of the public. Also, to make it really easy, if you don't want to go through that step, we just simply calculate it as per hundred dollars. So if your bill is a hundred dollars, you're going to be paying ten dollars more. If it's fifty dollars, it's five dollars more. If it's, you know, two hundred dollars, it's twenty dollars more. So it should be very easy rather than giving you an estimate, because the estimates are all over the place, as has been mentioned, and they're countywide estimates. They're not specific to Calabasas. Just do your own calculations. Um, the other thing is, this is a question, I I don't know who would necessarily answer it. You know, I was, I also was not aware. What what are these eight increases? Are those in different regions? Or are those all eight increases planned between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two for Calabasas? Because I only know of three.
Yeah, so I I could take that. So um uh there um are a variety of adjustments that take place over the course of a year. Um, there's been some for uh wildfire charges went on and then they came off and then more came on. Um, there was a small uh increase in June that had to do with um the fact that the low income, the 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 number of low income customers expanded during COVID because more people became eligible. And that program is funded by other ratepayers. And so you started to have to have cost recovery for the of for to fund the increase in number of low income customers. Um, there's a uh the the rate change that's coming in uh October with with SCE is actually part of what's called the general rate case. And there that's on three different tracks. Um, and those different tracks get implemented at different times. So um uh, and then there's an annual adjustment that takes place in the first quarter um of uh every year, usually January or February. So um uh, believe it or not, sometimes the rates go down in these adjustments. Um, that hasn't been the trend recently. Um, but uh this has been the normal course of business on on the SCE side since Clean Power Alliance was formed.
Wait, looking at the overall picture, do you have an estimate as to how much over the two-year period, just SCE's increases are going to be?
Uh, I I I'm going to get uh in trouble, but I'll I'll.
Give me a range.
I'll I'll venture eighteen, fifteen to twenty percent.
Total?
Over the two-year period that we described.
Okay, I thought it was more, but I I.
It it was going to be more. Um, the CPUC actually um cut Edison's most recent rate increase by about half. Um, a rate increase request by about half.
Okay, perhaps uh Kendon's staff can monitor these things a little bit. And when there's opportunities to provide public input, I don't know how good it will be. But um, we, the council should know because our residents will start asking. All right. Thank you both very much. If there's nothing further, we're going to move on. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. Thank you for going green.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And we're available uh uh throughout this process if there are issues or further questions.
Okay, um, what, okay, why don't we go next to um announcements and introductions, which is next on the agenda. And then we'll go to item twelve. So let's see, Peter, announcements and introductions.
Sure, I'll uh make a quick announcement here. This Friday, uh, August twenty-seventh at nine AM, we're having a ribbon cutting at the Rondell Smart Park, uh, which is at twenty-six, three hundred Rondell Street. Uh, this park is uh serving a new park and ride, a trailhead and adjacent to our newest hotel property. Uh, should be a very wonderful asset to the city. And I believe the mayor gets to cut a ribbon. So we'll see his proficient use of scissors.
Thanks. Uh, Mary Sue?
I wanted to give a quick shout out to the Torrance Little League um uh players who unfortunately lost today against Texas, but did a spectacular job at the World Series. Um, our last concert at the lake is happening this Sunday at six PM. It should be a lot of fun. We're gonna um hear music from Elvis Presley. Jerry Jerry Lee Lewis and my favorite Johnny Cash. So at six PM, bring your picnic lunches, glass of wine, and come join us.
David.
Thank you very much. Uh, just want to remind everyone, schools opened this last week in our city and community, so be extra safe driving around. And in in light of that, the Calabasas High School Football Program had their very first game and won, holding off powerhouse Birmingham last Friday night. So they are undefeated starting this early season. Uh, want to wish everybody happy Labor Day holiday weekend. And those, since we won't meet till afterwards, wish everybody celebrating a Happy New Year's, Rosh Hashanah, and Yom Kippur to everyone who is celebrating. Thank you.
Alicia?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, just um following up on the back to school, there was a delay in getting our crossing guards at our major intersections by school due to a staffing issue with the company that supplies crossing guards. But I believe most, if not all, intersections now have crossing guards. And I know the community is very grateful for that. We definitely need them with the craziness of the school morning. But just a reminder, please drive slow around our schools. And the afternoon traffic is picking up again, especially by our high school. So try to find alternative pickup locations, car pools, or something. But we really want to keep the area as um safe as possible in the afternoons and the mornings. And just um another push to get people in our community vaccinated. I know for those who have had children go back to schools, it's been a roller coaster of a week, um, probably more tiring than a year ago. But the best thing that we can do is get our twelve to seventeen-year-olds vaccinated to keep our schools open and as few education disruptions to our students. So places in the area to get that vaccine. So please consider.
Thanks. And I have two announcements. First, I wanted to thank the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce for hosting the annual mayor's luncheon. We did it in a safe environment outside. And it was very nice of them. They went to a lot of effort. Thank you very much to the Board of Directors and the CEO, Bridget Carl. Uh, thank you to the city council and to the staff for participating and showing up and listening to me give yet another speech. Um, and I have a fun announcement. Today I came to City Hall and I found uh, I saw displayed a brand new sign that's going to be coming up around our parks. And I had never seen this. We've never had this sign before. But I think COVID contributed, you know, to a lack of activity at our parks and recreational facilities. So there's been a tremendous increase in snakes. So you will see this. Can you all see it? Tony, can you hear?
It's the green screen. That's not letting you.
Can can you see it now?
It's better. We can see it better. Hold it.
I'm going to hold it. Hopefully, they can zoom in on it.
No, there, there, there.
Okay.
Why don't you read it, Mr. Mayor, because we're missing the bottom portion.
Beware of rattlesnakes. And it's got a little squiggly rattlesnake on it. So you'll be seeing this around our our uh sites where we've been noticing an increase in snake activity. And if you do view a snake, please be exercise caution. You can always call City Hall and ask for Alicia Weintraub, our resident snake wrangler. And she will come out and take care of it. Just kidding, Alicia.
I will pass it right back to James. No, actually, James, in all honesty, there are people in our adjacent communities that are snake wranglers, because we have learned recently that the fire department will only come out in certain situations. So there are a list of people in the nearby area that will come out free of charge to help move the snakes from um our area to more natural habitat. So.
Okay, and maybe we can actually, when we introduce this sign program, maybe in the next E-News, we can include um a link on for further information on that, too. So uh, we're going out of order, as I mentioned. We will take public comment in just a moment uh on on unagendized items. But we're going to skip to item twelve. Adoption of Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen forty-seven, establishing the mountain procedure for cost allocation plan. Ron, ours is our CFO is coming into the room. Ron? Let's see. There he is. Okay. Go ahead, Ron. Ron?
Uh, Mari, if you could also let in our um consultant, that would be great, Eric Johnson.
Oh, okay. That's a good idea.
Yeah, I thought I just brought him in. Hold on.
Okay, great.
There he is.
Great. Um, so I'll give a a brief overview. So tonight, we're going to talk about the cost allocation plan. The city hired revenue cost specialists to prepare this plan on behalf of the city. What this allows the city to do is allocate all of the overhead cost for all of the uh management staff and so forth of the city to all the operating departments. So what the this does is allocate out, for example, the payroll cost to all the other non-general fund operating departments. So you can think about tennis and swim, uh, all the landscape maintenance district, the library, you can think about public works, transit funds, and so forth. It also allocates out all the costs for the city manager's office, city council, city clerk, our human resources department, all of finance, our information technology department, all of your overhead costs that the city has. This allows the city to actually determine what it actually costs to provide services to the community by putting all these overhead costs with the actual line service departments. Uh, for example, like library, tennis and swim, the landscape districts uh and so forth. What it what it does is it assigns these costs to all of the non-general fund departments. The city has, as far as I can tell, has never done a study like this and has never allocated cost. The the cost allocation comes out to be approximately two point six million dollars. So if you want to think about it, the general fund is um supporting these non-general fund operations in the amount of two point six million dollars currently. With with that, we can now take a look again at our fee structure, whether it be the our planning fees, our building fees, our fees that we do charge for the landscape maintenance districts, our fees that we charge at Tennis and Swim Center, and actually determine how much we want to do as far as a cost recovery of uh of our cost and bear it into those fees. So it does allow us to have a truer picture, if you will, a more transparent picture of our operating departments and the services that they provide and the cost associated with those services. So I'll talk a little bit about revenue cost specialists and let Eric go through the methodology of the of this cost plan for the city of Calabasas. So I'll talk a little bit about revenue cost specialists and let Eric go through the methodology of the, of this cost plan for the city of Calabasas. Revenue cost specialist has been around for about forty years and they've worked mainly in California and they've served. Dozens upon dozens of city clients and other special districts, not only doing. Cost allocation plans, uh but fee studies, like I just mentioned, for planning departments or, or building departments, they also. Uh, and for other um services, whether they be utilities or other cost recovery fees. Um, they have, they've been uh great to work with for these last number of months. They delved into our city operations. We had uh questionnaires and surveys. Done by each one of the overhead departments within the city. And then we worked with Eric to determine the best methodology on actually allocating those costs. Uh, to all the non-general fund operating departments. Once again, uh want to reiterate um to state again that the uh cost allocation plan. States that we can allocate out two point six million dollars. The resolution in front of you allocates nine hundred thousand dollars and it's for last fiscal year, for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And that's in accordance with our budget. As a reminder, when we adopted the budget. Fifteen months ago, uh the City Council adopted it with this nine hundred thousand dollar cost allocation plan. Uh, as a revenue source for the general fund. So this is the implementation. Of that budget adoption that we did a little over a year ago to the two hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, one thing I want to, um, I forgot to put into the report. Currently, the, the library fund contributes about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the general fund. Uh, and how they do that is they actually pay directly for certain staff in our IT department. And certain staff for our facilities uh maintenance. Uh, so they, and I forgot to write that into my report, so my apologies on that. So library currently contributes a hundred and seventy-five thousand. In the resolution, we're still asking for an additional hundred thousand dollars for the library fund uh to contribute. That the library fund will still have a positive net income for last fiscal year. It will not throw them into the red. So with that, I will turn it over to uh Eric Johnson, President of Revenue Cost Specialists. Go ahead, Eric.
Great, thank you, Ron. Uh, let me go ahead and share my screen here. And start the. PowerPoint. Everyone able to see this, okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thought I lost you guys. Oh, all right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Um. It's good to be in front of you tonight, you know, virtually to talk about the cost allocation plan and, and really what we did. Ron gave a nice overview of revenue cost specialist. I myself have been doing this for over thirty-one years. Uh, working over a hundred agencies um around, mostly around California. And in those, we've really been doing cost allocation plans for the last twenty years, and these are some of the agencies that we've done cost allocation plans for. Um, again, mostly in California. So what is a cost allocation plan? And Ron did a fantastic overview and it just is, you know, it comes for the full cost of government. Um, and includes the direct cost and indirect cost. Basically, it, it. Takes government accounting and makes it more look like a business. What are the full cost of the, the um various different programs that you're providing? Including the overhead cost, just like you were a business, just like any overhead. Uh, for a business, so your direct cost are more of the services that have been provided to your customers, being provided to the public. The indirect costs are the support being provided to those direct um departments. So that those departments are able to do their job and, and have cars that work and have policy and had get a paycheck and so on and so on. So examples of direct services are street maintenance, landscaping, engineering. Planning, building, code enforcement in the community development area, those things that we, we know that these are the services being provided to the public. Versus the services that are being provided internally, accounts payable, payroll, general accounting, personnel, facilities amongst others. So why, why, why even allocate cost? I mean, other than being, having that overhead is identifying the actual cost of services. What are the, the real cost of services, not just those that you budget for in particular departments? It can lead to a more equitable, equitable sharing of cost. It, uh, you can recover cost for the general fund, so you now have a defensible number that you can transfer. To, from other funds to the general fund, because these transfers, especially if there were utility funds, could be challenged legally. And to the extent that you want to calculate fully burdened hourly rates and eventually user fees, these overhead costs would help with that also. So it's a fairly simple process. We want to know what we're allocating and we want to know how we're allocating. So the what we're allocating is we sat down with the, the admins and support departments, identified the services being provided. Then we talked about who's providing those sources. What are the other costs other than salaries and benefits related to those services? Then we identif, then we talked about how do we want to allocate? What's the fairest way and most equitable way to allocate these services? Based on the data you have, because sometimes you can have the, the perfect allocation factor. But it requires a research project to be able to, to compile the data. So there's always that balance between what is the most equitable and what is um available. So we had those conversations with the departments. We gathered data from the departments. Um, and then we ran the numbers. We calculated and verified it. The, we did a twenty-step allocation so that the allocations from a support department to another support department like finance provides payroll to. IT and IT provides IT services to finance. All those allocations get, get um reallocated out to the end user departments. Because our goal is to get all of the support costs out to the end user departments. So what we, what that looked like, as far as the various different services and the methods of allocation is what's on the screen here. So City Council, we allocated out based on the share of agenda items and adjusted budgets, so that those departments that have more agendas. Get more of your time and the support costs associated with your time. But every department receives a, a public policy benefit from having a city council and every department should receive the benefit of that. Even if they don't have any agenda items. So we allocate out by budget size also, so we have a weighting there. Um, in other areas, we allocate by FTEs. In other areas, we have more specific things like pub um. Uh, contract processing. We looked at the number of contracts that were processed by each, for each department. And so the more contracts you had, the more cost you, more of this overhead contract processing cost you received. Moving on to admin services, primarily personnel and facility maintenance personnel, but the number of full-time equivalent employees, the more employees you have, including part-time staff. The more of these costs you receive. Uh, square footage, the more square footage you occupy, the more of these costs you receive. And so on and so on, including down at city management, the city administration, city manager, allocated out by adjusted budget. Because there's not a direct correlation there like, like contract processing. It's something that's a larger. Policy function and support function for the organization as a whole. So everyone got their, their prorated share of it based on the size of their operating budget, basically. And then moving into finance, where we have general accounting and budget and um accounts payable and payroll. So accounts payable, the more payables a department has, the more of these costs it receives. With payroll, the number of more paychecks that a department would. Uh, needed to process, the more of those costs it received and so on and so on, including down to IT services where it was based on the number of users by department. So that brought us to our results. So what you see on the screen here is. The amount that were allocated to each of these end user departments. So the orange bars are general fund, the teal bars are non-general fund. So we're basically saying that public works. The third one down received eight hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars in support from the other support departments. Um, community development, one point one million dollars, community services, one point one million dollars. And then we get into the non-general fund departments and the big three there are the lighting and landscaping districts, the library. And the swim center, tennis academy, and all, all three of those are less than what community development, community services is receiving, but still a substantial number. And so I wanted to, to kind of dive down, drill down to those three large ones in the non-general funds, so you can see what's driving those numbers. So looking at the lighting landscaping districts, there's actually the, the five different districts there. And looking at the largest one, the lighting landscaping district number twenty-two. A break out of that five hundred thousand dollars, you can see some of it's the fifty thousand is city council and city council support. Legal services, non-departmental is a fairly big number, not city management, financial management. Um, public information is a large number because lighting landscape district number twenty-two has a large budget. And so it's something that generates a lot of support costs because of that large budget. Same kind of thing was done, of course, with the library. Library had uh two larger things, administrative services, which is primarily um facility maintenance. And information technology were the two biggest drivers there. And as Ron mentioned, part of that will be offset by, by what. What was currently being kind of allocated from the library back to the general fund through a direct budget allocation of employees. We brought those employees back whole into the general fund and then allocated them out the way we felt it was a fair allocation. And so that seven hundred thirty-two thousand dollars will be offset by, I think, the hundred seventy-five thousand that, that Ron had mentioned. And the swim center and tennis academy. Broken out to the two blocks there, but what's the numbers on the right are the sum of those two put together, total of five hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. And some of the big numbers there, of course, are payroll revenue, as you would expect, but also public information, because a large budget. Public information is being allocated out by size of budget. So all of these numbers represent a ceiling. All of these numbers are what we call a defensible allocation. And if you wanted to transfer that amount back to the general fund, there's a defensible number behind it and you could. There's nothing that says you have to. There's nothing that says you have to do anything with these numbers. It comes down to. This, this document is providing that transparency to say this is the full cost of these various different programs. It's now up to the council to decide how much of that do we want to actually transfer? And how much of that do we want to continue to be absorbed by the general fund? The report is two hundred fifty-nine pages long, and so there's all that detail in there. And for those of you, those of you that have flipped through it. There's a lot of little numbers in there that, especially when we get into the, the twenty-step allocations. But the first um eighty-some odd pages are the summary numbers. And so if you're looking at, want to know how each, what the allocation is to each department or fund. You look at the allocation summary on page thirteen and fourteen. If you want to know what's the detail behind. Each of those numbers, you dive into the detail that comes right after that in pages sixteen through eighty-one. And then what follows after that are all the details to show how each of those allocation, how each of those numbers got to that point. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Okay, the first thing we're going to do is go to. Public comment. And I would tell the public that if you have public comment, now's the time. We don't go back and forth. So if your hand's not raised and we're done with the public comment, then we're done with public comment. So I see a couple of hands up. We'll bring in David Litt. Please, when you come in, state your name and city of residence. David?
Uh, hello, Mayor um uh Buzogian and council members, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um. Um, I've been a resident of Calabasas for twenty years. Um, I'm a, a board director at CPHA. And I'm a, I'm the chairperson for Zone Seven, so I look over the budget at Zone Seven. What you have before you um consent item number twelve is an absolute sham. Um, I just listened to the presentation. Um, how anyway, if anybody could, could be honest and say you really understand what's going on. It, it's, 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 it's outrageous that this is to the council right now. Right now, we can't even. Manage our budget because we're anywhere between three to five months behind. Every single month on our Zone Seven budget. So we have trees that need to be cut, brush clearance. We don't know because right now, we're, let's say we're in August, we're getting the April or May statement. So maybe the, the CFO needs to. Get us a, 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 a budget that is within thirty days of the, of the, of the month. Um, instead, what this is going to do, when you go through the fine print, it's going to give the, the CFO. The discretion to take money from, let's say, LMD twenty-two or Zone Seven. Um, a, and move it to somewhere else. Um, right now, we're paying. My understanding is somewhere between three to five percent in administration fee. That's for Heather. Um, our late. Um, our past um city manager, Tony Corellos, always told me that the zones are. Are basically managed by the city that in essence, we're your gardener. The city is the gardener. And the cost that you're paying to the city is for the, the, the landscape. District manager, which is Heather today, you should be Steve Ball, and um we're paying. Uh, my belief is actual salary. This gives, this gives the, the, the chief financial officer to raise. Um, raise our revenue, raise the revenues, um which um people are outraged at the, the amount right now. And gives him the discretion to move funds from our account at, let's say, LMD twenty-two or Zone Seven. And move it somewhere else. Um, my understanding, he could go as high as twenty percent. Also, I have to question Mr. Eric Johnson, what is he getting paid to do this? It, it, this is outrageous that this is even before the council. Um, you have a budget. Um, this makes no sense. Also, one last thing, we got no notice. This majorly impacts the HOAs. We got no notification. Typically, the city as a courtesy sends us a notice. And tells us about it, a, an, an agenda item that may affect us. We got nothing. This is a sham. Please vote it down or extend it.
Okay, time's up. Next hand up I see is Michelle Von Kempen. Michelle Von Kempen?
Yes, I actually, I have a comment about the air traffic.
Well, you'll have to wait until that item. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Um, but we will come back to you. This is all, this is only for this agenda item, item number twelve. If your item, if your comments about another item, please lower your hand. We'll take you in order. Okay, Jonathan David Orf. Jonathan? You're muted?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, what time, I'm about the airplane noise too. What time do I come back on? I'm just, I don't know how to do that.
I don't know when exactly we're going to get to it, but I'm going to take consent comments next. So probably it won't be longer than a half hour, maybe within a half hour, I'm guessing.
All right, thanks. I'll, I'll come back. Thanks.
Okay, Laurel Ford. Laurel Ford, hello, Laurel. You're muted as well.
Um, I, I, mine was on the airplane noise as well, and I thought that the public comment section in the agenda was for all of our public comments.
It will be, but the consultant had to leave for another meeting, for another city council meeting, so we took him out of order. I announced at the beginning. I'm sorry if you. Were not on, but we'll take your comment when we come to it, which will be soon. Okay. Once again, this is only for item number twelve. I see no other hands up. Any last call for public comment on item twelve? Going, going, gone. Turn to the council comments. Uh, a-also, uh, with the consultants and Ron. Based on the um public comment we did receive on this item, did you want to respond or answer some of the questions if you would? Our notice is sent out. I think that was one of the questions.
Right. Um, as far as I know, we did not specifically notify uh the HOAs about this uh agenda item coming up for the city council. Um, in regard to the comment, what this is, is. It really is allocating the full cost of the city services provided to the LMDs. So i- in another way to look at it is that currently the general fund is supporting the LMDs to the tune of over nine hundred thousand dollars. So the general taxes of the city are property taxes, our sales taxes, our franchise fees. All those other uh fees and taxes in the general fund are nine hundred thousand dollars. Of those general taxes are being used to support LMDs twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-seven. And thirty-two. And so it's, that's the, the, I think, the proper way to, to look at it. So before the city council, it's the idea of how much do you want the general fund to support the LMDs? Do you want the full nine hundred thousand to support the LMDs? Or do you want the LMDs actually pay more of what it actually costs to provide them the services that the city does? Uh, and so that's a policy decision by the city council if they want to support the LMDs by nine hundred thousand or five hundred. And so that's a policy decision by the city council if they want to support the LMDs by nine hundred thousand or five hundred thousand. Or a hundred thousand or zero and let the LMDs pay the actual full cost of providing. Of providing general fund services to them. And like, like Eric said, this is, this is a standard cost allocation plan that dozens. If not hundreds, probably hundreds of California cities use these types of methodologies. To allocate cost out to our direct line operating departments.
Alicia, we're turning to the public comment.
I'm sorry, just I wanted to ask Ron.
For your comment.
Wait, where, I wanted to ask Ron about the HOAs, but I can wait till we're done.
No, it's your comment. It's your turn.
Sorry, okay. It was hard for me to hear for a second. So Ron, we did not notice the HOAs on this.
Not specifically for this agenda item.
So I think that's a big mistake because of this issue and the increase in cost HOAs. I mean, how much are we anticipating that the increase would be?
Let me hop back on to see what it is.
But I think we have such a good working relationship with our HOAs that for them to just come across this by digging through the agenda. I just don't think is appropriate. I think they should have been able to weigh in and provide their feedback because, you know, they're working on their budgets as well. Just to be around, you know, this new information and these incurred, these new incurred costs.
Understood, understood. So what is currently proposed in the resolution is a little over four hundred thousand dollars. Charged to the LMDs and we can scale that back however way. City council wants to reduce that or take it in half or whichever way.
Well, is there a penalty from what Alicia's saying? I think her question is, what's a, what's a problem with just continuing it and sending out the specific notice?
Yeah.
I think that was what she wanted to.
And bringing them into the conversation. I mean, it's just to be like, here's an increase to your bill without them even being notified of this. I have an issue with.
Is there a time factor here?
So the, so we, I think we need to. How do I put this? We are not proposing an in and. We're we're proposing a charge to the LMDs, but this would then get figured into. Next year's fees, which would then kick off in, what is that, probably January, February? So and then we would take a look at the, at the cost and what it is that we need to fully recover and so forth going forward. To generate fee income to pull from the LMDs for the, for these services.
Yep, but rather than do it that way, isn't it easier to just notify the HOAs and then get their input? Rather than say, here's what's happening, see what happens. And then, you know, it just seems to me like. I I think the question is, what is, what? If this were delayed and a notice were sent out, would there be a problem? Is there a deadline here?
So yes, we are closing the books for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and this is what we're talking about is nine hundred thousand. For last fiscal year. So if the council still chooses, we could not do this, this tonight. We would close out fiscal year twenty twenty-one. That would not include this nine hundred thousand dollar. Charge to all the non-general fund departments. The general fund would. Most likely have a deficit for last fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Because of that, and we can do that, and then we can start this whole cost allocation plan for this current year, twenty-one, twenty-two. And we can, we can definitely do that. So the, so the deadline is really for closing the books. On last fiscal year, and that's why this is before you in August.
Okay, Kenan has his hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mary. Just I I think Ron covered that, but one of the things that I just want to emphasize is we we are talking about an accounting. Closing the books with the fiscal year of last year. And so homeowners, individual property owners in the HOAs. Will not see any fee increases to their assessments this fiscal year. That is a different conversation, a different topic. There is no assessments, no, you know, if the council decides to move forward with a fee study, we would look at that, but. There are no changes to what property owners are paying right now.
I know that, but if we set the thing in motion, then there will be next year with it already in place. So that's just saying. It's not retroactive. I understand that part. Mary Sue has her hand up, but Alicia, were you done?
Um, for now, I I'll go after I have.
Mary Sue?
No, I I am. I, it brings to my comment that I've been meaning to say that. Ron is not a public relations person. He's our CFO and this is what he does. We need to be sure that we have. Michael Russo's group alerted to any issue that would involve a stakeholder in the city. To make sure they're notified. I mean, we have certain guidance for developments, but this is, this is important. So I support. Tabling this and and bringing the HOAs in. I also wanted to ask about the comment that we are up to ninety days delayed in getting. The districts their bills. Is there a response to that?
If I may, it's not their bills. The city provides them a financial accounting. Of their specific zones. So we have not yet closed the books on June thirtieth, so I have not provided them. With the June statements because I am not closed. I do believe that I am, that we sent them May. But I will double check on on that.
Is there a way to get? To get their balance, I guess, balance a better word than bill, to get their balance of what they have sooner, so that they can plan?
It's not, it's it's their, it's their status of the budget versus their actuals. So again, I'm not closed for for June, and I won't be for probably another two and a half to three weeks. And then once we're, once we're closed, then we can generate those statements for June and distribute them.
Last question, just to narrow in, what is the, what is the best ideal turnaround for that information to HOAs? I've heard this before, before you, Ron.
Yeah, so it's, it's whenever we, it's whenever we close the month. So we typically close the month. About three weeks after. So generally by the twenty-first of the following month. Where we are closed. And then at certain times of the year, I don't. I have other projects or or reports that I'm working on, and then I get around to distributing the HOA statements to them. So sometimes they get it at, they get it on the twenty-fourth or the twenty-eighth or whatever it is, whatever it may be.
So maybe we could give you whatever resources you need to get it by the thirty days out or something. I I think we should try and set a goal and and make sure you have the resources to get it done. Thank you.
Okay, I see Peter's hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I've also noticed a few things in here that. I I just don't think we can move forward with tonight. And Ron, I understand you need to close the books. I don't know if you're going to amend the books later. And you can't wait till October?
No, sir.
Okay. Right now, where you've got nine hundred thousand in. General fund that we want to allocate. Out of the two point six million.
Yes.
Which is about thirty-four percent.
Yep, about a third.
And. We didn't, in the, in the proposal that's before us, it's not allocated equally. In fact, it's it's allocated pretty heavy in some funds and not so much in others. What was the logic used to make that distribution?
So the the logic used is that. I did not want to throw the library fund into a deficit position, nor the tennis and swim center into a deficit position. So that's why I allocated a hundred thousand dollars out. The transit funds, gas tax, Prop A, Prop C, transit. Those funds have surplus, if you will, so we can allocate the the full measure of this. Of this overhead cost to those departments. The same reasoning with the LMDs. Some LMDs, they have surplus, so they can easily. Absorb this additional charge. Other LMDs cannot. So I I prorated them all the same. On taking a little bit over half. Of the of the charge to come up with the nine hundred thousand. So the rationale was protect the library, protect tennis and swim, protect the LMDs. To the, to the tune of, and then charge fully where there is available funds or surplus funds. And then each year, we can have this discussion with city council on how do we want to allocate? Do we still want to go light on tennis and swim and and library and LMDs? And more fully on the other ones or however way we want to do it. But that was the rationale for this year's allocation.
Okay, but applying that rationale to the LMDs by putting this allocation out there, are we not putting them into the red?
Again, some of them, yes, would be put in the red and some of them would not.
But either way, this cost is going to come out of those HOAs at some point in the future.
Correct. So I did not, I did not. Okay, I'll use the term. I did not play favorites within the LMDs. I charged all the LMDs the same percentage. Didn't matter if they were have excess funds or didn't have excess funds.
Okay, and so if we decide not to make the move against the LMDs this evening, we could move the other monies with no impact. To those funds. No, no adverse impact, I should say.
Right, they would still all remain with have a surplus and and they would all still. They would all still be in a, in an okay financial ability. Again, this is implementing what we had planned. Was the city had already adopted in the budget for last fiscal year. This is just. Taking, figuring out the actual methodology, how much the actual cost plan is, the two point six million. And then allocating out nine hundred thousand, which was the budget adoption.
And and if this goes away, I think it's going to go tonight, you know, and you do have to come back and present to us. Another point when the HOAs are notified. It would be really helpful to walk through that. Final allocation detail report of a typical LMD. Because, I mean, for example, LMD twenty-two has been allocated six thousand five hundred dollars of council. Money, and it sounds tonight like that was money well spent. But they've also been allocated fifty-eight thousand in communications, and I'm not exactly sure if that's. I mean, I know these, we've heard that these are all defensible numbers, but I think an explanation needs to go with these.
May I make a suggestion, Peter? I hear with the direction the council's going, and we have a huge agenda. If we're just going to talk about. How we're going to continue it, when it's, I mean, let's just continue it or table it if the majority wants to do that. And then we can bring it back with notice given.
Can I, can I make a motion with the mayor's permission?
Yes.
I would like to move that we make the allocations indicated on page four. With the exceptions of those in the LMDs. So that Ron can close the books. And I know that's not the full nine hundred thousand. It's not even close, but at least it lets us start making some allocations. To the funds that are using general fund services and start the ball rolling in that direction.
Ron, would that cover your ability? I mean, how would that work to have half of it done and half not?
Yeah, that that is fine, and more than likely, the general fund is going to be really close to zero. For last fiscal year.
Okay.
So it could be negative, it could be positive, it'll be around zero with Peter's proposition.
All right, well, let's see if there's a second to that.
Okay.
Okay, I had a question then. You know. We've gotten a lot of communications regarding the library. And I wanted to talk about that a little bit. Why am I, can you explain why? Out of all of these, I mean, tonight's communication was the first one I got about the landscape district, but. What, why am I getting all these communications about the library? And have you responded to these or have you gotten these communications?
I have not received any communications from the library regarding this, this particular item. I have presented before the library commission the last couple of years, a financial update. Of their fund and their operations and how much surplus they have. And I have discussed with them that we are in the process of doing this cost allocation plan. And that more than likely, it would be a large number that would be assigned to the library fund. So I've answered. Those questions from the library commissioners, but since the. Since this agenda item has been put out there, I have not received any communications from the library commissioners.
Why, why would you think, I mean, just looking at it, why would an average resident or someone who's interested in the library? Be upset that it looks like we're raiding the library's funding? I mean, I, that's the tenor of the communications I'm getting.
Right, and that was the same voices that I was hearing when I, when I spoke to the library commission. So. You know, the the library is in, is in good financial position. And they, they have about two million dollars in, in available reserves for their. Operations. We are setting aside a quarter million dollars a year. For their capital replacement, which is, which is a a good idea that we should. Continue to do in the near future. So I think what they are mainly after is. Increased staffing and maybe increased services with that. So they they may instead of saying. You know, hey, don't take any more money for the general fund. Why don't you let us spend that on, you know, another librarian? Or more services is what I've heard from the library commissioners.
Okay. All right, I see several hands up now. David?
Thank you. Speaking to the motion, which I guess we're talking about now, I I'll follow up on James's comments about the library. The correspondence I received was primarily about the library, very little about tennis and swim. The notice we all received today about the HOA and David Litt's comments to me ring. Loud and clear that there should have absolutely been notice to the HOAs in the city. If we're going to take, I might recommend this, if we're going to take the HOA LMD. Off the table or continue that, I might recommend we do the same with the library until we at least hear a little more from the public and consider it. And then Ron, for you, this is a separate question. If we are going forward and as opposed to taking the full hundred thousand. From the library commission in light of the most recent sales tax. Numbers you provide us with, which are great and 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 a improvement from what you anticipated or we anticipated. Can't we reduce that the amount by a portion of those increases we just received?
I mean, council can do whatever you like. First answer, you're correct, Councilmember Shapiro. We've received good news from sales tax. Receiving continued good news from our TOT, but all those numbers are factored in. So if we don't do the nine hundred thousand dollars tonight, the general fund, high probability, it will end up. At a deficit for last fiscal year. It'll be under a million bucks deficit, but it'll be a deficit. If we do kind of half and half, according to the current motion before the council. We're going to be on the either side of zero, negative or positive. Again, I haven't closed the books, I haven't done. All the revenue accruals nor cost accruals in there. But that good number from the sales tax and from the TOT is already in my calculations for how the general fund is going to do.
Okay, David, anything else? No, okay, Alicia?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to reiterate also about the library and all the emails that we received and that. I mean, I know Ron answered your question by saying like there aren't cuts and everything. But there has to be something that all of these members of the public were looking at and some feeling or assumptions they had about this plan. So I would support what David said about pulling that part as well. I didn't receive any communication regarding the tennis and swim center, just a ton about the library.
Peter?
Yes, it's, it's my motion on the floor, and I've had two council members ask to take the library out of there. I do want to respond to that. I would suggest not, and here's why. Uh in our previous plan, the library was allocated a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in salaries. And in this, we're transferring a hundred thousand, so we're already moving towards a smaller number. Uh even though their full allocation would be seven hundred thousand, we're not doing that tonight. We're only doing a hundred thousand of it. Also, when you look at the cost allocation plan, again, nine hundred thousand is thirty-four percent of the two point six million general fund that we're spending on all of these other funds. We've allocated to the library, if we go through with this motion tonight, is fourteen percent, not thirty-four. So it's already a reduced number. It's less than would break them for last year's budget, so we'll be able to close the budget out this year at a zero. And we can set whatever policy we want going forward in what their fund is. We're not taking any money away from them, we're just zeroing out the account, and then we can make that allocation. It's not like the HOAs where we're taking the money away from them with no say. We can put whatever money we want back into the library. Ron, did did I mess that up or did I get that right?
You're you're very close, Peter, um and my apologies if I was uh not clear enough in my report. So the report is to take an additional hundred thousand, so they, so they currently support the general fund by that hundred and seventy-five that I previously mentioned, uh so this would be an additional hundred thousand, so a total of two seventy-five.
Okay.
All right, I like in my motion then, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, what are you gonna do now?
I'd like to remove the LMDs and the library from the table on page four and move forward with whatever allocation is left over.
All right, Mary Sue, are you still into second then?
Yes, second.
Okay, all right. I mean, just my comment would be there, there, I would rather not split this up, and I think it's just not ready. I mean, I think it needs to come back all in one fell swoop and not be done tonight, based on the comments I'm hearing, the public comment, the uncertainty. So um I won't, I won't be able to support the resolution. It's not a reflection of your work, Ron, it's just a you know, one of these happenstance things, I think it's aggravated by the fact that we just aren't up to normal operations quite yet. And there's just been a lack of of notice. So I don't know who else might be out there that might want to comment if they had, you know, if the HOAs were given the entire document, who knows what we would get back. Anyhow, um the motion's been made and seconded. Are there any further comments before we call the roll? All right.
All right. I just have a question, I guess, for Kenan or Ron. If we or Eric, if we push this item over, what's the, I mean, just in simple words, what's the risk if we wait?
The the risk is that uh we will close the books for twenty twenty-one and general fund will be at a deficit and then no other uh then all these other non-general fund departments don't have any impact, and we can certainly do that. And then we can implement this for twenty-one, twenty-two.
Sorry, but for people watching who like don't have a finance background, like can you simplify it a little bit? Like what, like what's the impact to the city if we push this item a few weeks?
In in one sense, there it's it's twenty twenty-one will be closed and we move forward in the future with this. No, no impact, because all we're doing is is moving cash from library fund, tennis and swim, LMDs and all the other funds into the general fund, so it's an it's an accounting procedure.
So we can really wait, like there's not, bills will still be paid. It's like closing out the books, like it's accounting principles, right?
Right, it's accounting principles, and just realize when I come back to city council, general fund will show a deficit. When I come back with the annual financial report in January, general fund will be at a deficit. And I'm fine with that, I'm just notifying you that that's what it will be.
We can put an asterisk and explain why.
Uh no, I just, it's, it's just what it is. It's it's what happened.
Well, I would put an asterisk and explain what happened at this meeting if we went that way.
Uh and let me add to that if I can, Ron, so just, so usually with uh the fiscal year end, um most auditors will allow finance departments to keep the books open, usually ninety days after the fiscal year end. And so uh with our special meeting in in September, that will be purely focused on on um the housing element. So we wouldn't be able to bring this back until October. By that time, the book, you know, we have to close the fiscal year, and then that's when the auditors start coming in to review things. And so when they look at it, council, they don't, they won't provide an asterisk saying this is why it was a deficit. They'll just say the city was forced to use nine hundred thousand dollars or whatever that number is out of its reserves, out of its piggy bank to cover the fiscal year, end of story, and that's done.
Well, but that, but Kenan, this could have been brought earlier. And or this could be heard in September. I mean, we said it's only for the housing element, but it could be added with this. And also, I mean, let's just say we had an opportunity to buy a big piece of land that was valuable to the city to buy, and we spent general fund money, yeah, would show a deficit. But you know, there's a valuation to the land. I mean, there's all types of reasons why a budget might not look balanced. I I just am concerned about splitting this thing up. I mean, it just seems to me like if if we're getting complaints about notice, we're getting complaints at the library, it's obvious the public doesn't quite understand this document, and to approve it tonight halfway um is is just not, is not the preferable way in in my opinion. But the council, Cory will do what it does.
Can I call for a vote?
Yes, but I don't want, I mean, every time the question's asked, we're not getting the answer of what the real difference is. The difference is on a piece of paper, it's gonna show a deficit. For, well, you know. All right, so with the roll call, Mari, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub?
No.
Mayor Protem Mauer?
Aye.
Mayor Wasaga?
Nay.
He carries three to two, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so the LMDs and the library will come back at a future date. Correct.
Um, you know, I'm not sure why my colleague voted no. I didn't mean to cut off the discussion. I thought it was we were all kind of all heading the same way. It was not my intent to
That's okay.
To end any dialogue.
Well, the vote's been taken. I was trying to question it, but anyways, it doesn't matter. It's it's the votes taken and we move on.
And we pulled out the two most important things, so.
But why didn't you support tabling? And I'm just curious.
Because I I still, at this point, don't have an answer as to what the problem would be with delaying it. I mean, so what? So it shows for a month, we didn't take an action. We take the action next month.
And so you voted no because?
It's not a loss of money in this case.
But we all voted yes to delay it.
What?
We voted yes to.
Oh, okay, on that, I did not want to split up. I did not want to split those items up, but I said. Sorry, I misunderstood your question. Let's move on. We've already, we've already voted on it.
I know, but I, again, I apologize for, I thought we were heading the same direction, and Alicia, why, why did you do do mine?
Oh, no, I just wanted it all to be looked at in um a comprehensive manner, just in case there were things that we had to look at from other sections besides the LMD and library. I just want to look at them together and because of the noticing part of that, but.
Okay, now we'll have time for the HOAs to get notified. We have two hands up on this. Matthew?
Thank you, uh Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure that the mayor pro tem uh picked up on the point that the vote that was just taken was not to continue all of it, it was to approve the plan without, for all cost allocation plan components except the LMDs, the landscape media districts and the library. I wanted to make sure that the vote was understood.
Thank you. You're, I meant to say moving, moving, tabling those items that we selected. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you for the clarification.
And and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, we didn't table those other two items. We approved the cost allocation plan for the previous fiscal year without the LMDs and the library. And when we look at it in the future, we're looking at the cost allocation plan for the next year's fiscal budget, because by the time we look at it, Ron will have closed the books on last year, so we're not splitting it. We're leaving those items up for last year and we'll look at them for next year.
Okay.
Ron, did I get that right? I got it right for once. All right, thank you.
Now. Thank you to the consultants and to Ron, and we will move on. We're gonna go back to, um actually, we need, we missed an announcement that Mari would like to make regarding the election.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um you wanted me to um share information regarding the upcoming recall elections, September fourteen. So we do have a ballot drop box in front of City Hall where uh voters can um deliver their uh ballot. Um those ballots are being picked up by the county every day and taken to um Norwalk um to be um uh received. We also have a uh four-day vote center. We will have a four-day vote center at Founder's Hall starting on September eleventh through September thirteen, which will open from seven AM to ten um seven, I'm sorry, ten AM to seven PM. A an eleven-day vote center will be at the Water District, um opens on September fourth through September thirteen. Both vote centers will be open on Election Day from seven AM to eight PM. In addition to that, we have a flex vote center at the senior center. It's a one-day uh flex vote center from nine AM to one PM. Um so please come out and vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are now going to oral communications and public comment. Members of the public, if you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, not on the agenda, then please raise your hand. This is not for an item on the agenda. This is for items not on the agenda. Okay, so uh I'm just gonna mention the name that's written on here, you know, this is all the information I have. Uh first I, first person is Timmy, T I M I. If you could give you us your name and city of residence, please?
It is, it's Timmy, but I fear you're gonna ask me to wait. Uh James, I'm the one that emailed you from Quiet Skies WH.
Okay, but you can't, you, I said it like four or five times.
Right, but your email told me to speak during public comment. That's why I raised my hand. I'm following instruction you gave me, but I'm happy to wait.
Okay, it's public comment when I call for public comment on the consent calendar. We'll we'll take your comment. Okay, so we'll go to McNutt. Michael, hi.
Hi, everybody. Hi, Mayor, hi, council. Thanks for giving me a couple of minutes to uh say hi to you and to just say a couple of a couple of words first. Uh was a great mayor's lunch, and we certainly appreciate everybody coming out and participating with that. Uh sorry, uh this is Mike McNutt, sorry, uh Public Affairs Communications Manager, Los Verdes Water District. Uh so I work in Calabasas, and I'm also the Chair of the uh Chamber of Commerce, uh Chair of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. Um hey, just real quick, I wanted to uh make sure that everybody knows on the call, especially uh you, council, how much uh we value our relationship and our partnership with you in the city. And uh the reason why I'm bringing this up now is um I know that there has been some discussion about whether or not there's gonna be a pumpkin festival held this year. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows where the chamber's uh perspective is coming from when it comes to the pumpkin festival. Um I know that all of us have been through a lot, and clearly we have been, when it comes to the pandemic and multiple other things. And from um the perspective of the Chamber of Commerce, um you know, this is something that we have done collectively together for a long, long time. This year, though, is different from some of the others, with the Delta variant surging, with children and kids that are not able to get vaccinated or, you know, we less than twelve years old. And having the pumpkin festival geared toward bringing kids in, we as a chamber just feel uncomfortable moving forward and participating in it this year for uh the public health and public safety of our residents or anybody that comes there. Um so I just wanted to say that that is why we are choosing to not participate in the pumpkin festival this year. But as I said before, because we value our partnership so much that moving forward next year and beyond, we want to get right back into it and make the best ones that we can moving forward. And with that, that's all I wanted to say, and I appreciate the time from everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right, next public comment is from Pam Evans. If you could bring her into the room, please.
Hi, uh, this is Pamela Evans. I've lived here twenty-plus years. Uh obviously, I can tell how serious you guys take being city council people. But I'm still here sharing with you how important it is to, for us to look at lot usability versus lot size when it comes to development. Clearly, the city of Los Angeles, the city of Malibu have spent energy and time and with their planning departments and created clear rules of lot usability which help people and helps our city prevent lawsuits. Um, you know, you can have a twenty thousand square foot lot, but less than ten thousand square feet of it would be the beginning calculation for a lot usability if it's got a slope to it. And I keep bringing this up because I see us have real estate plans and development plans, but I don't see anything in our agendas that ever cover lot usability. That means flag lots don't get driveways and call it square footage in the calculations. Slopes are calculated at thirty and twenty and ten percent, depending on how steep they are. And we really need our city to put their thought and their uh employees towards doing this work that makes a big difference. Um, I know you guys are not drunk with power. I know that you're trying to do the best you can, and I can see that in your meetings. So all I ask is you really seriously put it forward and investigate it, because I have no power to make it happen. And I am sad after so many years, seeing our city constantly having to battle lawsuits from developers, et cetera. I am a real estate appraiser. I look at this, this, this information all the time. Um, thank you for what you guys do. Budgets are never fun. And uh just now, we appreciate you.
Okay, thank you. All right, last call for public comment on un-agendized items. Uh Mari, has anybody called in?
We don't, we have no hands or calls, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. This is items one through eight. At this time, like we did last time, because it worked out pretty well, and we don't know which item you're gonna want to speak on. If you wish to speak on any of the agenda items from one through eight on our consent agenda, please raise your hand. I know there are a number of you. This would include the airplane noise that several of you had wanted to speak about. So we'll start. All right, we're gonna start with Michelle Van Kempen.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh I'm Michelle Van Kempen. I've been a Calabasas resident for more than twenty years. Um I first want to reiterate the gravity of the problem with the air traffic noise and emissions, the uh amount of low-flying traffic uh over, certainly over my property, over my whole development. Um, the deleterious effect this is having on our quality of life in Calabasas and uh the property values in Calabasas are very serious. I wanted to give a little background. I noticed in the staff report that accompanied the agenda for tonight's meeting, um there's reference to the Congressional Res- Resolution HR forty-eight ninety-two. I wanted to give a little background about that. Um unfortunately, it's it's cited in the staff report as a potential solution to this issue. Um, the main thrust of HR forty-eight ninety-two is to reestablish the EPA's Office of Noise Abatement and Control, um which was dissolved in nineteen eighty-two. Um unfortunately, because ironically, when that uh office was dissolved within the EPA, the rationale was to give control of noise abatement to state and local governments rather than having federal oversight. Unfortunately, we've seen as a practical matter that what it's done is to give the FAA unfettered control and uh state and municipal governments like ours in Calabasas have absolutely no control over the noise that's affecting our communities. Um, this new resolution was just introduced on July thirtieth, so it's a brand-new resolution. The congressional sponsor of this resolution, Representative Grace Meng, has introduced this same issue every year since twenty seventeen. So this is not something that's gonna happen anytime soon. It would be a great thing if It would be a great thing if this office within the EPA were reestablished, but it is absolutely not a solution that's gonna help us in the short term and with the existing problem. So I respectfully request that our city council collaborates with the Quiet Skies Woodland Hills, which is the local organization that is most educated about this issue. And that, in addition to having residents contact our Representative Ted Liu, that the city council request that Ted Liu hold a virtual town hall with Calabasas so that the residents, those affected by these FAA route changes, have a forum to be heard and can effectively work toward change. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Laurel Ford. Yes, okay, you're here. And if you could unmute yourself.
Okay. Hi, my name's Laurel Ford, and I'm a Calabasas resident who's been working with the Mountain Park Homeowners Association, which represents 67 families. We are concerned about the issue of airplane noise over our development and city. As I'm sure you are aware, the FAA replaced a historic flight route with a new path, which now goes extremely low over our homes. The noise is constant, often every five minutes from morning into the evening. We could hear it inside our homes with the windows closed. It is horrible, and we are asking that the Calabasas City Council help us to return the flight path back to its former historic path. I am aware that the council has put endorsement of Congressional House Resolution 4892, the Quiet Communities Act of 2021, on its agenda, and we are grateful for that. However, it is in its earliest stages of legislative process, and its primary purpose is to reestablish the Office of Noise Abatement and Control within the Environmental Protection Agency. This legislation is a long way from doing anything to help with our current situation. I would like to recommend that the city council coordinate with an organization called Quiet Skies Woodland Hills, which has been working tirelessly on this issue. A representative from this organization spoke at your last council meeting, and I believe is going to speak tonight. This will provide a larger voice on the issue as well as providing needed information on the situation and possible next steps. As I stated earlier, while congressional studies like HR 4892 are valuable, it will offer no immediate relief from the current flight path noise over our community. We need the city council's help to persuade our local congressman to consider and introduce a more targeted approach. In short, I ask that you request that Congressman Ted Liu engage in a virtual town hall meeting with Calabasas constituents specifically on the topic of aviation noise and pollution, which are a detriment to his district. The bottom line is that we need your help. A single voice may get lost, but lots of voices and the voices of our leaders can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I see Pam Evans.
Hi, I live in the Classics. We are having an immense amount of noise. Two weeks ago, I woke up with a giant helicopter in my backyard. I live at the top. We too, at the Classics, are seeing an immense amount of noise from airplanes, but when you call the FAA, it's a waste of energy. Thank you for finally taking up this issue and realizing how important it is to our community. At this point, if I look it up, there's no one in our area working on this. I don't really know about Quiet Skies, but I do know we do have an issue. And they are planning on closing the Santa Monica Airport, which could only mean more noise over us. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you taking up this.
Next is Alex Cornelius. Name and city of residence?
Yes, thank you for hearing our discussion on this noise issue. I'm in Classic, Calabasas. I just wanna kind of echo what other people have said, is that there is an increase in noise recently, and I'm not sure if there has been a realignment of flight paths. My understanding is they used to be, you know, they'd move them. Sometimes it was over Woodland Hills, sometimes it was over Calabasas, sometimes it was further south or further north. They should go back to whatever they're doing previously where it wasn't always consistently over Calabasas because we have had a significant increase in aircraft and aircraft noise over the last several months. Thank you very much for all your efforts. We appreciate everything you guys can do. We know it's not something that you can actually call the FAA and tell them to change it, but anything you can do to help us get to Ted Liu and make some impact on this would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Jonathan Davidorth.
All right, thanks very much. Some of this is redundant, but yes, the airplane noise is out of control. The planes are coming right over my house. I live up in Mountain Park. And it's recently come to my attention that the main reason for the blight is this changing of the flight patterns. It also has come to my attention that our city was not informed of these proposed flight pattern changes. In fact, it seems like the FAA, as far as I know, didn't notify any of the incorporated cities in LA County of these flight pattern changes, so it wasn't just Calabasas. Without notification, how could we, the city, the citizens, have any opportunity to attend a meeting, respond to this lifestyle-eroding change that we've been suffering? We have all these rules and ordinances to protect our peaceful enjoyment of our homes. We have light ordinances, sound ordinances, rules for the gardeners, contractors, et cetera. And this airplane noise thing's far more insane than any of those things. It's nonstop. I know there's a lot of people around in our communities that feel the same way, and it's nice that some people came to talk tonight. I appreciate it. I propose that the city starts vociferously fighting back on behalf of all of us. Calabasas was not informed, and we would not have relented had we known. We need to get this remedied and get it remedied promptly. The city's plan to write the letter to Ted Liu and to support some specific legislation, as was mentioned, that's super weak. It's not going to affect prompt change. We'll probably be dead by then, in fact. I don't know. It's, it sounds like the FAA has already broke existing rules by not informing us, and we need to take them to task. If I'm wrong and the city was in fact informed, then the city's been derelict, but it doesn't sound like that happened. I don't know if any of the council members are expert enough or even have the time to aggressively fight this and get the old flight patterns back. We need a well-supported team. The Quiet Skies Woodland Hills is a good idea. Maybe we need to hire a well-versed attorney to get these planes out of our neighborhoods. The planes with their high-flying guests came unannounced. They are relentlessly loud, and it is time to bounce them out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan. I have one more public comment, and then I am gonna close the comment period for all of the consent agenda. So if you want to talk about this item or any other on consent, you do need to raise your hand now. Timmy?
Yes, that's me from Quiet Skies. Hi, everyone. So I've spoken with Alicia in the past. I did speak at your last meeting. James, thank you for replying to my email this morning in respect to the letter that I sent. I can understand you guys probably don't have a vast education on this. Most don't. Why would we? But I'm happy to be the one that fights on your behalf. I'm already doing it now. My presentation with the LAX ad hoc at the Noise Roundtable is on Tuesday, August 31st. We are working to revert this path back to its historical tracks. Now, what everyone spoke about in terms of the letter to Ted Liu, that was the target of my email this morning. It's not gonna be effective, and I do believe that you guys had the best of intentions and endorsing the HR 4892 is fantastic. It's just that you would be remiss if you did not mention that more targeted legislation needs to be written and needs to be introduced and passed into law. And we need Ted Liu, as well as Brad Sherman from the Valley, to do that. So I did recommend the town hall meeting. I'm hoping that, Mr., oh, God, James, I'm gonna mess up your last name, so I'll just call you Mayor. I'm hoping that you will include that in your letter because the truth is every government body has more power than the people. Maybe not if there was like 50,000 of us screaming, but in terms of initial communications, you guys have more leverage than we do, and we desperately need you. Now, Los Angeles City Council members have dramatically engaged, not all of them, but at least five of them. And that's resulted in the FAA relenting and agreeing to modify departure paths out of van eyes, to which, of course, I was involved and participated in. Now, that shows you that on a local level, we can do things, but I really would appreciate a dialogue back and forth with you guys. I would like to have maybe 10 or 15 minutes of your time in the future as opposed to a three-minute public comment. There are real tangible effects that you guys can make if you're willing to take this on. And Calabasas is a unique opportunity because the FAA now has been ruled to have violated no less than three federal laws. The negligence in the implementation of these routes is gross and unfathomable. And since Calabasas, Hidden Hills, and other, as the gentleman just mentioned, unincorporated areas were never notified, this puts you in a prime position to kind of fight back.
Okay, I'm sorry, the three minutes were up. I see no other hands. Mari, do you have any calls that came in that I'm not seeing?
There's none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let me make this recommendation because we've been going for two hours. Let's take off items of consent that you want to discuss, approve the others, and then take our break. So Alicia, would you like any items other than item eight, which will come off? Give any other items you want off? David, any other items you want off?
That's fine. Eight is fine.
Peter?
Just eight is fine.
And Mary Sue?
Five, six, seven.
Five, six, and seven. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve consent items one through four?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Yes.
Mayor Potemauer?
Yes.
Mayor Bosajin?
Aye.
Carrie, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we've been going about two hours, so we'll take a 10-minute break and come back, and we'll start with number eight because I think people are probably waiting for that. So we'll see you soon. So we'll see you soon. Okay. I see two councilmembers here.
The councilmembers here.
Very soon. David, are you here? Okay, we're all here. Um. CTV, are we ready?
You can begin whenever you're ready.
Okay. Okay, we're back from our break. It's now nine fifteen. So let's take item eight first, which we took off consent. I'll start in with a couple of comments. Um, first of all, thank you to the public for reaching out to us and letting us know of this problem and the severity in the different neighborhoods. It's very helpful to get the bearings. And we, um, as I noted before, I don't know how much we can do, but we'll, we'll, we agendize it for discussion. We have this letter and we're going to talk about strategies. Um, with regard to the letter, I would like to, the letter to include a few more things if the council's in concurrence. One would be a request that the federal legislation encompass a notice provision to affected communities, a formal notice provision that there's going to be a change, and a comment period. So I don't know, uh, Matt, if you know offhand if that's already existing law, but we, we haven't gotten notices in the past, so I'm assuming there is no notice requirement. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, it is not a requirement to provide notice to the city nor to its residents. There may be a comment period, but it's probably buried in the federal register. That could certainly be added to the legislation, to the request.
I would like the letter to include a, a specific request that it include a notice provision to affected jurisdictions, along with a reasonable comment period after the notice is given. Secondly, um, I'd like the legislation, I'd like the letter to be amended to ask that legislation, uh, be amended to include a discussion of available alternative routes by the Federal Aviation Administration before they change routes. So in other words, they're required to discuss alternative routes because we can't require them to choose any specific one. And thirdly, I'd like the, a paragraph in there making the request that I've heard from several people through emails that we asked a congressman to hold the town hall. We can't really limit it to Calabasas residents, so it'll have to be one that maybe we host that's open to the public. So those are my three requests. That, to me, is the extent of the jurisdiction we might have to affect the change. Mary Sue, you, your hand is raised.
Um, my question is for Matt. Matt, do you have at your law firm an aviation attorney?
We have, um, we don't have a federal aviation expert, but we are involved in regulating a couple of small airports that are owned by some of our cities up north. So we do have folks that have aviation experience. And, um, I could bring them in if, uh, desired by the council.
Well, one thing I would like is more information. I don't, I'm not sure where we're at in the process. Um, if this is new, it almost seems like it's happened overnight. And what happened most recently? I know we have a group that has a lot of information, but I prefer that we look at it through the, a legal lens to see what our, um, abilities are. And I'd almost rather get that information before we reach out to Congressman Lou. I mean, we don't even really know what to ask him. Um, this piece of information could be very helpful. That would be my recommendation. Thank you.
I accept that the, the, I would just note very soon that the time is expiring for the legislation to be introduced and amended.
Yeah, I think a letter definitely could go out. My suggestion was to gather a little bit m- more facts before we reach out to Congressman Lou and ask him to put on a town hall for what we need to kind of, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, um, then Alicia, your hand's up next.
So a few things. I, maybe two years ago or so, something happened similar with the city of Malibu. So I thought our staff could check in to see what happened. And I knew they were having all of these meetings regarding the flight path. I don't know how it ended. I just, you know, heard bits and pieces. So I thought our staff could reach out to Malibu to, um, hear what happened and who they met with and how they got some things changed. And then the other thing that I thought would be important is figuring out where this is happening in our community because it's only impacting certain areas. But I think we should have an understanding of where this is happening and to what communities. Because I think, I mean, we could probably figure it out ourselves just based on the communication that we've received. But is it happening off Lost Hills and Lost Virginus? Is it just like above the park area and off Mulholland? I think it's really important that we're understanding this um, as we look to make these changes. And I would do an, anything we can to, um, strengthen our letter and really push that whatever government agency is responsible for this, um, speaks to us and engages us of how we were not informed of this change. But I really stress that we go back and talk to Malibu. And maybe some of the callers tonight, um, are aware of what happened in Malibu as well. And they can send us an email. They know more than we do on this.
All right, David?
Thank you. Uh, I agree, James, with, uh, your recommendations for the amendments to the letter, changes to the letter, uh, and, and also with the town hall request with Ted Lou to work in conjunction with any of the individuals or the organizations that spoke tonight, um, to, to get this more, uh, more front and center, if he would agree to, uh, to do so. Uh, we hit, as Alicia, as you said, we did have these issues. We, I recall receiving a lot of emails a couple of years ago. We had problems in Calabasas also. And I did attend one of those meetings, um, in Malibu. We, as a city, filed objection letters, uh, to the FAA and LA World, uh, LA World, uh, airports back in two thousand nineteen. I talked to, or wrote to Kendon about this to see if we could locate them, uh, because we were having all kinds of problems then. And I think, I don't know if there was a, a change due to the actions of Malibu, us, or, or what there was, but for a time, there was a change in the, and the, the route seemed to change a little bit away from our city. And now they are back. So any action we can take, letters, uh, including the FAA and LA World airports, I would support as well.
Peter?
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement here. And I would also suggest that if we, if we did two separate letters, one for HR forty-eight ninety-two and another one for the town hall, you could hold the second letter until you've been able to, uh, address the concerns of councilmember Weintraub and Mauer. Uh, I'd like to just move this forward.
Okay, so I guess, um, we should have a motion to approve the letter with the two, two of the three amendments, asking for a notice and comment period clause, and for a discussion of available alternative routes before they change routes.
I'll support, I'll make a motion to support that letter with the changes.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Mauer? Yes?
Yes, yes.
Mayor Bosajin?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and could I get a little further direction for staff on what you want before we send a letter requesting a town hall?
I understood the request, uh, if I could summarize, to be, to take a look at the situation with the FAA's approval of these new flight plans out of LAX, where we are in that process, where the common opportunities are, if there are any remaining, uh, and where our leverage points are. And then, uh, assess what our, our ask for Lou is, then put a letter together, uh, that could come back to council, uh, certainly at your, I would think at your next meeting.
Well, do you need it?
And I'm not sure we need to vote to do that. I think just consensus direction is.
Okay, so we'll do that. And we'll tee that up so that we, not too much time passes.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you all very much.
And to include, um, reaching out to Malibu as well, noting their, their apparent past success.
Okay, those are going to be staff things to do, Kendon, um, obviously. Um, okay, items five, six, and seven. Mary Sue, you took these off. Do you want to do them together?
Yeah, it'll be real quick. So these three, um, landscaping contracts, I'm suggesting that we, um, include a, a, a slip sheet like we did for the last landscape contracts, reminding them about the prohibition of using certain anticoagulant rodenticides. It was not in these three because these were older contracts with amendments to them, extending them. Um, so my recommendation is we add the same language, the same slip.
Oh, Robert, you've joined us. Robert Yalda?
Yes, we definitely can do that. Matt helped out with that, and we will add it. Again, the two items are only thirty days extension. We're going to have the new contract, and that would have definitely have that. And also, when I inform council, that state of California already abandoned this, and, uh, i- it's already a law. But we reemphasize that, a good point, and we will take care of it.
Yeah, and, and I mentioned that, in fact, my HOA is still using those boxes, so, um, so thank you, Robert.
Sure.
Okay. And with that, would you like to make the motion, Mary Sue, to? Okay.
Add a slip to the.
The amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Peter, okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut?
Yes.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Mauer?
Yes.
Mayor Bosajin?
Aye.
Carries five zero.
Okay. We'll move on to item number ten, which is adoption ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash three ninety-four. Give me just a moment. Okay, this is adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash three ninety-four, adding Calabasas Municipal Code, Chapter nine point three eight, use of the public rights of way and protection of schoolchildren, bus stops, critical infrastructure and wildlife areas. Adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen forty-eight, designating critical infrastructure. Adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen forty-nine, designating school routes, and approval of a professional services agreement with San Fernando Valley Community Mental Health Center Incorporated to provide interim housing and support services to unhoused persons in Calabasas. Um, let's see. We have Michael McConville and Matt Summers. Is Michael McConville, can you bring him in? Okay. He's here. Let's, uh, start in. Who's, who's going to actually, Michael, are you presenting the staff report?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to share my screen here. One moment. Okay, um, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers. Um, getting right into the, um, background on this item. Uh, at the prior city council meeting on August eleventh, the city council considered, uh, the following four recommendations from the homeless task force of maintaining a balanced approach with the city's homeless response. Uh, the first is entering, um, into an agreement with a local homeless service provider to offer interim housing and other support services to individuals in Calabasas experiencing homelessness. In addition to, um, the adoption or the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash three nine four, um, adding Calabasas Municipal Code, Chapter nine three eight, use of the public right of way and protection of schoolchildren, bus stops, critical infrastructure, and wildlife areas. And then followed by supporting resolutions, uh, twenty twenty-one one seven four eight, twenty twenty-one one seven four nine, designating critical infrastructure and school routes. At the culmination of the last meeting, staff were instructed to return at the August twenty-fifth city council meeting with a proposal, um, to enter into a formal agreement with the San Fernando Valley Community Mental Health Center, um, again, to provide interim housing and support services. Uh, council, um, they approved the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-one, uh, dash three nine four with modifications, and chose, um, not to consider resolutions twenty twenty-one one seven four eight and twenty twenty-one one seven four nine until the ordinance is second reading. So first, I'll get in, uh, to some of the main, uh, big picture items on the interim housing and support service agreement. So again, there are two items. One is interim housing, natural shelter, and, uh, the other is the support services. Um, staff is proposing a, uh, entering into a agreement, again, with the San Fernando Valley Community Mental Health Center. This, as of right now, attached to the staff report is a draft agreement. So the scope of services are established and the, um, you know, uh, large, uh, items, including, uh, the fee schedule. But some items need to be revised, specifically as it'll, to relate to more of the clinical related items that perhaps, um, we can describe in, in greater detail, um, in just a bit. Uh, the contract or the agreement is proposed to four or three-year term. The annual fixed cost is thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars, but this cost could be more depending upon the use, um, of, of the facilities as well as the services. And, and finally, the agreement was modeled with a current agreement that the center has with LA County Department of Health Services, uh, as a way to incorporate best practices. The, um, interim housing aspect of the agreement, um, I'll, I'll get into and explain a little bit right now. Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority, LASSA, estimates that the number of individuals experiencing homelessness in Calabasas to be at two. Um, for this reason, staff is recommending one bed be made available at all times, uh, with the option to add additional beds if the needs arise. Uh, once in the interim housing, or again, maybe commonly referred to as a shelter facility, uh, they're per- permitted to remain at the facility twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, they are provided three nutritious meals daily, including at least two hot meals. There are hygiene supplies and clothing provided as needed. And, um, they have at least weekly janitorial services. And, and finally, they, they have access to secure storage space. Um, I'll go over just briefly, uh, some of the main tenants of the support services. Um, first is the, um, the center will be providing, uh, engagement, intake, and assessment activities for clients. They'll be offering stabilization services at the interim housing. They will develop and implement an individualized case management service plan. They will assist clients with this, uh, accessing services to address their immediate needs, including lack of identification, income, transportation, medications, and other basic necessities. Uh, they will provide, uh, referrals and linkages to primary health and behavioral health services and other support services as needed. Um, the last five here, um, they, the center will also assist clients with obtaining income and are establishing benefits, medical, Medicare, social security, unemployment, et cetera, and coordinate the completion and submission of applications. They will also provide educational opportunities for, um, clients related to health, wellness, and life skills, including ten hours per week of group programming. Uh, the center will assist clients with gaining, restoring, improving, and ma- maintaining daily independent living skills, including social, leisure, budget management, and personal hygiene skills. They will provide transportation as needed by means of agency vehicle, bus fare, or private vendor. And then finally, um, and, and with the primary goal, they will coordinate with permanent housing providers to support the transition of clients to long-term housing. And then finally, and and with the primary goal, they will coordinate with permanent housing providers to support the transition of clients to long-term housing. One item that was brought up last meeting was the transportation aspect. So how do we get an individual wanting to seek services to from Calabasas to Venice, specifically to the George Vega Center for Hope Drop-In Center? And the city is recommending at this time the use of the city's current dial-a-ride provider, Ideal General Services, for these transportation needs. We are recommending to enter into a separate agreement to provide this unhoused transportation for a six-month trial period at a cost of nine thousand dollars. Some of the benefits of using the current dial-a-ride provider is the ADA accessibility, including the wheelchair lift that the vehicles currently have. These are minivans with adequate storage. They have seat logos and the drivers utilize standard uniforms. Again, drivers are background screened, drug and alcohol tested. And then finally, their dispatch center is routinely sending out vehicles to our cities. So they are familiar with streets and main points of interest. So getting the the first aspect of this presentation was getting into the service offerings, including the the housing element. Now I'd like to get into the other side of the balanced approach, the ordinance twenty twenty-one three nine four, including the use of public right of ways and supporting resolutions. So again, the prior meeting, the city council approved the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-one three nine four, adding Calabasas Municipal Code, Chapter nine three eight, use of the public rights of way and protection of schoolchildren, bus stops, critical infrastructure, and wildfire wildfire areas. This ordinance generally prohibits the camping, prohibits camping, sitting, loitering, sleeping, or storing property on any public highway, median, sidewalk, crosswalk, or other public space that obstructs pedestrian or vehicular travel with exceptions. Taking direction from council, language was added to this ordinance, requiring enforcement officers to inventory and maintain medication and valuable personal property of any person for at least seventy-two hours with notice to be provided regarding retrieval procedures. Talking a little bit again about the supporting resolutions. So Resolution number twenty twenty-one one seven four eight declares certain real property and facilities as critical infrastructure, subject to a fifty-foot buffer. While Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one seven four nine designated school routes within the city, subject to a two hundred and fifty-foot buffer. Staff did receive comments from council and further evaluated the proposed school routes map and recommends that the city council adopt the maps as initially presented. One specific area of concern was the fact that the school route may not have covered both sides of the street and we confirmed with the public works staff that indeed it would. As it relates to including school routes near viewpoints, school or local preschools, staff did not recommend at this time to include those as the schools had limited foot traffic. Again, we do have public work staff on if we need some clarification on that as well. So now I'll get into the staff recommendations and next steps. At this point, we would ask that council approve the draft agreement with San Fernando Valley Community Mental Health Center to provide interim housing and support services to unhoused persons in Calabasas. In addition to that, we would ask that the city council authorize the city manager to finalize the final agreement with minor adjustments. The third recommendation would be the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-one three nine four and the fourth and fifth being the adoption of resolutions twenty twenty-one one seven four eight and twenty twenty-one one seven four nine. Again, designating critical structures and school routes. The next steps for staff, at the following meeting, we would appropriate funding for the San Fernando Valley Community Mental Health Center and transportation agreements utilizing ARPA monies. And then in 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 terms of policies, procedures, and additional recommendations from the council, we staff would convene with the homeless task force to further review the city's unhoused policies. And we would partner with the San Fernando Valley Community Mental Health Center and other local agencies, including LASSA, La Family Housing, HOST, the COG, the Rotary, to collaborate on training staff, implementing best practices, and adding service offerings. One of those potentially being the family safe parking. And that that concludes my my presentation. We have Gabriel Graham from Las Verdes Malibu COG, outreach coordinator. We have Charlie Rubin, the director of volunteer services and cornerstone at the San Fernando Valley Community Mental Health Center. We have Deputy David Taylor here from the Los Los Angeles Sheriff's Station. And again, we have, I believe, Robert Yalda here from Public Works to answer any additional questions.
Okay, so we can bring all those people into the room. I see they're here, most of them. But bring in whoever's not here. I think you mentioned Robert Yalda and Deputy David Taylor. And now we'll turn to the public. Now would be the time for public comment. If anybody has any public comment to offer before we turn to council questions. So I'm going to open the public comment period. I don't see any hands. Um, Mari, has anyone called in?
There are no hands or no calls, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public comment period and turn to the council. Anything, well, first of all, anything that anybody, Gabriel, Deputy David Taylor, Robert, anybody would like and Charlie, sorry, would like to add before we turn to the council comments? Okay, then we'll start. Anyone who would like to start? Peter?
Sure, I can start. First of all, thank you, Michael. Thank you, staff, everyone who participated. I'm really excited to see how quickly we've taken this topic and moved it forward into a to an action statement here. Couple of questions. We have the nine thousand dollars for transportation costs. I was a little surprised at that. Is that? Is there a reason for that? Is there somebody on standby or what do we get for the nine thousand, assuming we use them twice in a year?
Yes, to answer your question, there is a standby costs and and that's the the bulk of that cost. Due due to the speed and trying to implement and move this this ordinance and this agreement forward. That's why we only are moving forward with just a six-month interim agreement where we then can maybe open it out to to bid for, you know, perhaps more competitive pricing.
Okay, thank you. And then there was some discussion at our last meeting about SecureAll and their role. We typically receive a comment from the public, a request from the public. We then call SecureAll, who according to our policy should either call Gabriel Graham, our outreach coordinator, or call the sheriff depending on the situation. But it appears from the numbers that the majority of incidents don't either make it to Gabriel or to the sheriff. Have we clarified that as part of this as well so that we can make sure we're effectively reaching the homeless?
Some some outreach occurs with Gabriel without SecureAll, some outreach occurs with SecureAll without Gabriel, and so on and so forth. To your point, we understand that the process wasn't perfect and that is actually one of the top items for discussion that will be brought to the homeless task force of how to formalize not only the outreach, but again, perhaps the handoff to the the center and transportation and so on and so forth.
Okay, those are the only questions I had.
Thank you, Peter. The other member of the task force working on this issue quite extensively is Alicia. I see your hand is up too. I should have called on both of you first, so.
No, just want to thank staff for part two of this. It's great. The only comment I had and I spoke to Michael and Kindon about this was on the maps with schools. I brought up the fact that due to traffic issues, many students walk to the Gelson Shopping Center and the gas station to be picked up so that that would be considered part of the walk to school route, that section of Mulholland. That's a main place where people are picked up just because of the congestion on Mulholland Highway.
Okay.
And just just to reiterate, I know we spoke about this last time, but I think every situation is handled with individual attention and care. So just, you know, sometimes right away, I know AJ is on the phone with Mason and Gabriel. Sometimes Gabriel is on the phone with Mason. Sometimes people are speaking to AJ, like everyone involved is really looking at the individual to see who is best to respond. But I know there's constant communication between everyone involved and I know everyone's really doing their best to serve these individuals who need help.
And and I should follow kind of to Peter. I'm sorry, Alicia. The the procedure that we follow in terms of, you know, we're SecureAll and Gabriel and so on and so forth, we initiate if the city is contacted first, right? So sometimes Gabriel will find them on his own as he canvases the areas. Sometimes the sheriff will while they're on patrol and so on and so forth. So to Alicia's point as well.
Mary Sue?
Thank you, Michael and Alicia and Peter and Kindon for moving this forward. And I'm so impressed that we are are partnering with the San Fernando Valley Community Health Center. They definitely are pillars in this in in the community in this. And Gabriel, thank you also. So I still have a little challenge with connecting the two pieces, in particular, the the engagement and in our contract with the San Fernando Valley Community Center. Can I just say community center or is there a short name that you appreciate, Charlie?
You can just call it the center. We'll be.
The center, I like that. The center in the scope of services, it says con- conduct engagement intake and assessment. Is that done at your center or can it be done in the field?
That, in in this case, since, you know, partly because of COVID and, you know, we do have a lot of our staff that actually go into the field, but the initial one would need to be at at our clinic at the Jorge Ben, Jorge Vega Center for Hope.
That's our contract arrangement, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to take us from finding someone in need. And maybe it's a call and SecureAll is the first responder, which I do want to have a much a a further discussion about armed, uniformed. I'd rather see them un-uniformed with their arms hidden. Would you agree, Charlie, it's less threatening?
I I would agree. And you know, we have guards at the Jorge Vega Center for Hope. We have two. They're they're actually unarmed guards. Our center has always done that. We have guards at all of our housing sites and two other properties as well.
So none of them are armed?
Correct.
So I'd like the task force to look carefully at that. I I mean, so they make the contact, but where we've been seeing a disconnect is that SecureAll makes the contact, reaches out to Gabriel or to the center. Who does he go to next?
I I would say that would go to Gabriel first, Gabriel.
And then Gabriel comes and visits and and assesses.
Well, Gabriel would make that initial one, you know, when, like I said at the last meeting, Gabriel has a very keen eye and has great communication skills. And I think he would he would make that first assessment. And since he's, what I really like about kind of the the beginning, the beginning parts of this was Michael and Gabriel came out, they toured, they saw, they could actually visualize. That was kind of on the slides that Michael showed last time, because then he can better explain to the individual. You know what? I've been there. I'd be be happy to go down there with you. This is what they can provide. I think the next step, maybe, whoops, my cat jumped in here, before the next meeting would be for at least Gabriel, maybe Michael, to even look at the housing so that way they get a better idea of what that looks like. So it's not a misconception.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. I'd like to also have it to our, I'm sure my colleagues would too, of the of your center as well as your housing. So does it make sense for Gabriel to be the first contact and make that relationship? And maybe Gabriel, we give him the transportation dollars. I I'll get to transportation in a second and I'll leave that that thought there in the air because I do have a a concern about putting someone with severe mental illness on a dial-a-ride bus and then letting them off alone. That doesn't, that doesn't sound like it's going to work unless you're there receiving them. And that, and so there's just a lot of, a lot of steps that we might want to take a closer look at.
No, I I agree with you and I think also, you know, we we have to really check with Gabriel and make sure he's comfortable with that as well. And I I did send Michael some other information. I I don't recall if it was shared or not, but we we provide lots of different trainings, even mental health first aid. So our guard company, we've had all of their their guards go through mental health first aid. So really what that does is it just provides a source to see what the signs and symptoms are. They can recognize, kind of gives you de-escalation skills to notice even substance use.
From what I've heard, SecureAll has gone through all of that. Is that?
That's great.
Kindon, I think you had a list or they provided a list of all the classes that they've taken. But I think that there's never enough training in this area, especially in the field, applying what you've learned. So really, that's my only, that's my, those, that's my challenge. And 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 Michael, you said in the future, that's the area that you're going to try and kind of firm up as well with the task force. So I appreciate that very much. Did you want to comment? I see your hands.
Yeah, so yeah, one one aspect is is you were talking about, you know, having Gabriel, you know, steward kind of this individual. And I think it's important to note that it would be very rare, and maybe Gabriel can can follow up after me. Very rare for the person to meet, Gabriel meets someone one time and have them accept services. This is, they're going to be having two, three, four Gabriel, you can confirm, you know, outreach attempts and building lots and lots of rapport. And and so after the first, again, SecureAll outreach, it's it's really in Gabriel's hands from there, right, to connect to.
Yeah.
And and then furthermore, as it relates to your transportation, I haven't informed Gabriel yet, but it's certainly an option to have someone, whether it's Gabriel, go with them in that dial-a-ride, right, to the George Vega Drop-In Center and then come back with a dial-a-ride. So again, that person, Gabriel, is going to be the foundation, right? We won't call it a friendship, but again, a rapport that he has with their trust that he has with him, not only to accept the services, but to get in the car and again, put a face to getting this person some help, so.
You're reminding, you're reminding me of one other concern I had. The way the calls go, again, I think there's way too many calls that need to be made, maybe one or two too many. Let's say I get a call, I call City Hall. Who's responding at night or the weekends?
We don't.
On vacation or someone's with kids or, you know, the city has operational hours from, you know, eight to five. This is not an eight to five operation and dial-a-ride, they're they're available twenty-four seven also?
Uh, no, it it would be, it would be similar hours, right? Again, yeah, this is, yeah, this wouldn't be a full-fledged twenty-four hour day.
And and Charlie is the center twenty-four seven? Would we be able to bring someone there at any time?
No, and you know what? Honestly, that's the, you know, we're I think I told you before, we're very well connected. We've been around for well over fifty years. And the, you know, previously LAPD had the Hope team and that was their big thing. A lot of offices even lost, a lot of those places are not open on the weekends. We are looking in the very near future to go to six days a week, which would be open on Saturdays and then extend it Tuesday and Thursdays from five-thirty at night till seven PM at night. So that will provide a little bit more.
So I guess we need to be aligned with your hours for services. So then the, so just walking through SecureAll, which hopefully in T-shirts, looking friendly, reaches out and it's a Sunday, no services yet till Monday, notifies Gabriel. Gabriel, are you twenty-four seven? No. When are your hours?
Business hours.
Okay, business hour, so not weekends. Okay, and dial-a-ride, Robert, when is dial-a-ride operate?
Six days a week, seven AM till probably six.
Six days a week, 7:00 AM till probably 6:00 PM is available and if is needed, we can extend.
So I think I, those are my questions. There's kind of a few holes to fill and stitch together. But the Rotary Club could be a wonderful asset for the weekends if someone needs a sleeping bag or a meal. Or something like that. Gabriel, I'm sure at some point you and Michael will connect with them. They have. And I would look at transportation, putting someone on Dial a Ride by themselves, opening the door. And they're they're disappearing or we need to make sure that doesn't happen. Maybe Gabriel during the week can. Take care of some of that. So thank you all very, very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, David, I think your hand was up, but I don't see it up, but go ahead.
Okay, just very briefly, thank you. I just wanted to thank. Our task force, Alicia and Peter for their hard work, Gabriel, every everyone, Michael. Great follow-up report and everybody on board, of course, Kendon. I appreciate the revised map and I guess there'll be a third revision of the map for the schools. And that is was very clear. I think it's great. We are acting and doing something and and putting a. Very, very positive step forward and we can only improve from here. So I'm thrilled about that and I look forward to Kendon. I didn't know if there's any timeframe. Estimate of when the, when you'll be able to finalize contracts, things like that. That was my one question.
And Councilman, let me address that. I know that. Michael and Mr. Rubin are meeting tomorrow and we should have even if not all of the details tomorrow within the next week or two. We're very, very close and that's one of the things I wanted to mention is. You know, hats off to those who've really worked on this, Mr. Rubin. Gabriel, Michael, when we met with the task force, the the, you know, the challenge was or the the task at hand was. To create a program and an infrastructure framework with that could serve as a model to other communities. That's really hard to do in just a few weeks and and. You know, admittedly, we're not there yet. We're we're still, there's a lot of questions. I think Mary Sue, you've mentioned some of those. Those still need to be addressed. There's a lot of, you know, places that we still need to fill in the gaps. But I do want to acknowledge the center and and Charlie Rubin and his colleagues. What they're doing with Calabasas and what they've been able to do in two weeks is remarkable. Really, they're taking, they're creating a new pilot program in some, if I use those words. With the city of Calabasas is this is new to them and for them to get this far along in the draft agreement. And to be able to give us some guiding principles. And and to move us forward is just wonderful. So again, thank you, Charlie and and staff, Michael and all those. Who've done this. Again, our our commitment to the council is this is not done yet. We we hear you. We know that there's areas to improve and we'll be working with the task force on that to to address those issues.
Okay, Alicia.
No, I just wanted to, I just get feedback about the modification to the map.
On that one, if I may, and that's certainly doable even tonight. It would be direction to approve. Resolution number 2021. Seventeen forty-nine with added direction to expand the Mahaland Highway School Route to encompass. On the northern end all the way up to Mahaland Drive, Pass Freedom Drive. We can't designate the area within the privately owned center, but we can designate the sidewalk in front.
And that's exactly where everyone's walking.
Okay, that's, we'll include that amendment when the motion's made. I did have a couple of comments in my own. Oh, Mary Sue, is your hand still up?
Yeah, it is. I saw Deputy Dan Mateo is here and I wondered if he wanted to add to any of the discussion.
I had asked earlier, but I don't know. Do you have anything?
I don't have anything to add. If you guys have any questions in regard to any specifics, I'd be willing to answer those.
Um, I just have a couple of comments and questions. If I'm reading this right. We're anticipating the contract Kendon or Michael to be. About $60,000 a year total.
No, I I it's thirty-six thousand five hundred. For the baseline of one bed and then I believe that we. Are allotting an additional approximately fifteen thousand, so fifty thousand a year. For additional beds or services, shall the need arise? And there's a $9,000 six-month transportation.
Six months, so it's about seventy thousand dollars a year.
Right, and that that could change, right?
Michael, just to clarify that as well, that is a baseline cost because if more beds or services are used. Then we would be charged directly from the center for those, is that correct? If there's a extended use of beds or or other things.
Right, yeah, so so thirty-six thousand five hundred annually is is for one bed, right? And if there's additional bed or service use or training use and so on and so forth. That would be additional costs on top of thirty-six thousand five hundred.
What I'd like to see is after six months, in addition to all the other reviews of the effectiveness, just to see what the costs have run. So that we can see whether whether this is, you know, going to be recurring costs, whether it's going to be more or less. And whether there's other opportunities to to be more competitive in some way. I I don't know. Then to the city attorney, I'm assuming that you looked over this and the. You know, the, as far as the resolutions and the changes to the municipal code. The legal definitions are specific enough and not overly broad. That this would be enforceable and and there's no specific case that's come down that says we can't do this kind of thing.
That's correct. My assessment is that the resolutions and the definition of the ordinance are enforceable, in particular because we have. The services or will have if approved, the services contract in place, that enables enforcement of the ordinance in full. And at any time in which, for whatever reason, we don't have a bed available at the time that enforcement is needed. As to a particular person who is not accepting services. Then the particular places, particular times, components can still be enforced. And yes, I did review and assistance in contract negotiations, it too is enforceable.
Okay, please let us know if there's new case law or changes or statutes that would preempt this. Okay, and finally to the city attorney. Can we consider this all in one motion or do you need separate motions?
One motion is okay.
All right, so there has been an amendment regarding the roots. Other than that, I didn't hear any other specific amendments. There was other direction given to staff. But as far as item number nine. Subparts one, two, three and four, is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make the motion to adopt.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut.
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro.
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Yes.
Mayor Putnam Mauer.
Yes, but I wish we didn't use the word deleterious. I find it very. Upsetting when. And and I tried, I was muted, so I tried to start speak before. On the first page of the ordinance is where is the city desires to protect minor children from these potentially deleterious. Effects. And that's in in the context of seeing homeless people.
No, I I don't know if it's seeing homeless people. I think it's the interaction.
Or potentially having the public right of way blocked and having to traverse around it.
Wasn't seeing anybody.
The references to the prior. Recital as to the blocking of the right of way, but I would recommend if the council supports it. Change that whereas to be city desires to protect minor children. Potentially negative impacts and allow for safe passage. That may meet the need there.
That would be much better.
I'll accept that amendment.
Thank you.
Okay, and the second or the motion would accept that?
I guess.
Okay, then recall the roll, Mari.
Councilmember Kraut.
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro.
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Yes.
Mayor Putnam Mauer.
Yes.
Mayor Bosajin.
Aye.
Motion carries up, sir, Mr. Mayor.
And just again, another huge thanks to staff, Michael, Kendon, Matt, all the work on this. We should all be proud that this is the model for Calabasas.
And I'm looking forward, I know one of the items that you'll be looking at task force colleagues and and Michael and Kendon. Is safe parking for families. I'm looking forward to hearing more about that.
Okay, we'll move on to item ten. Thank you all very much. Deputy Mateo, we'll see you a little later on. Okay. As those people leave the room, let's bring in Kelly Fries for. The 2021 Calabasas Film Festival. This is a line item request, item ten for twenty thousand dollars. An additional funding for the Calabasas Film Festival. We've already given fifteen thousand this year. Kendon, are you giving the report? I mean, it's not much of a report, it's a request and then we'll have Kelly speak in public comment.
That's correct. And Mayor, this comes to the council as an item under old business. The Calabasas Film Festival did request funding previously and we had that discussion. In June, when we discussed allocation of the stimulus funds. At the time, the council did not move or make any action on that request. The request was much higher at that time. This request to the council tonight is twenty thousand dollars. I have confirmed with the city attorney that stimulus funds can be used. This would fall under the the tourism. And support of businesses in that category. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly, who can address the council regarding this request.
Okay, Kelly, if you could just introduce yourself.
Sure, I'm Kelly Fries with the Calabasas Film Festival. Good evening, Mayor and distinguished council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present a request for additional funding for this year's Calabasas Film Festival. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I wanted to start with a brief statement. To share our current plans and provide some context for this request for the eighth annual CFF. Like last year, we're staying up to date with COVID regulations and taking the necessary precautions. This year is our intent to return to a five-day film festival and have secured the US premiere of films from major studios. Including Warner Brothers, Netflix and ESPN Films. We will require all attendees to show proof of being fully vaccinated or a negative COVID test. Masks must be worn during our indoor screenings while all of our wraparound events will be hosted outdoors. In some discussions with sponsors, the topic about possibly having to cancel has come up. But like last year, if necessary, we will pivot the festival to make sure all of our attendees are safe and feel comfortable to join us. And for those of you who have joined us last year for our drive-in, you'll recall how it turned out to be an overwhelming success. Now, turning to the funding request, as we all know, it's been a very challenging past eighteen months affecting many of our local businesses. In addition to monetary sponsorships, the CFF depends on the support of our local businesses to donate their venue, their staff. And to cater our wraparound events, but this year we've struggled to secure the same level of donations and funding as many of our local restaurants. Are not in the financial position to contribute in kind with food or catering donations. That is why we're returning to you. For this additional request, but this funding is our intent to use this money by passing it directly back into. Local businesses to compensate them for their services. One hundred percent of this funding is going right back into our city and we used to put on our five-day film festival and work with our great Calabasas companies. Without this funding, the majority of our pre and post-screening events, we would not be able to offer any catering to our attendees. Last, in our desire to provide an outdoor screening event option, given the success of the drive-in, I'm also reaching out for your support. For use of the Calabasas Tennis and Swim Center this year for one of our events. We would like to host an outdoor screening on the tennis court to allow attendees to be outdoors and social distance in the bleachers. While again, continue to work with and use Calabasas businesses. Thank you for your time and we look forward to producing a wonderful community event next week, next month.
Okay. Questions from anybody, comments? I don't mind starting. First of all. Thank you for making this presentation. I. I had a couple of questions, okay? Are all the events going to be held in Calabasas?
Yes.
Have you gotten permission to use the Viewpoint Theater?
We're not using Viewpoint this year.
Oh, you're not using Viewpoint Theater, okay. When you have the movies indoors, the ones that are indoors, where are they going to be? Just to Regal?
Just Regal, yes.
Okay. And of course, the Motion Picture Hospital is out these days as well.
Correct.
The after-parties are going to be in Calabasas?
Correct.
In the event, if an unfortunate event happens and the state comes in and we have like a higher COVID. Infection rate and the state says, hey, we're going to shut down these kinds of things entirely. What would you use the money for?
We'd be, we'd work with you all. If you wanted it back, we haven't used it, obviously give it back. We could save it and use it. When we're allowed to safely have a film festival as well. Or we could pivot to a drive-in like we did last year as well.
Okay. All right, I don't have any other questions. David, I see your hand up.
Thank you. I just had one question. You said the movie theater, will you be considering or using at all Founder's Hall as you have in the past?
Yes, Founder's Hall will use on Thursday evening. We have two local filmmakers in Calabasas. That have submitted their films and so we're screening them there and then the student day will be there as well on Sunday.
Okay, and how many films, if you know, I I know it's always somewhat fluid. Will you anticipate having at the theaters on the opening nights?
Sure, on Wednesday, it'll be one screening, one theater. On Thursday, it'll be two screenings and then Founder's Hall. Friday, if we're able, the Tennis and Swim Center, so just one. And then on Saturday, we're. Three screenings from eleven to five at Regal. We'll not be having a closing night film that night.
Okay, and could you explain a little further what you're talking about on the center court? I I know we've had events there before, we've been involved with concerts from the Beach Boys on, so there have been events there. What do you, what are you anticipating doing?
Sure, so I met with Kathy and it would be the larger tennis court and we first walk in. So the top part up there would be for guests to mix and mingle, have some past apps. And then the bleachers on this side where they had the boxes, we would be able to social distance in the bleachers, VIPs, sponsors can be in separate boxes. Then the screen would be just halfway across the very middle of the actual courts and we'll be walking on any courts and it would just be staying on one side of the tennis court.
Okay, thank you very much. And I will say I, along with others, attended the last year's, the. Given the year we all had, it was really nice to be outside and have an event like you put on at the drive-in at King Gillette Ranch. That was, that was fun. Thank you.
Mary Sue.
I am really glad that you guys are moving forward and doing this. I think it'll be great. I had a question about how you determined whether or not to have. Or whether to have both vaccinated and a negative test in the morning. It seems like a lot of venues. And concerts and restaurants and clubs are going for vaccinated only. Why did you choose to do it this way?
Sure, just we're following suit of two other film festivals locally that we had looked at. Outfest recently just did it. I think they just ended. This past weekend and that's something that they were doing. They had to show it within twenty-four hours of a negative test.
And where was this? I'm sorry.
It's called Outfest. They were down in Hollywood in Los Angeles, LA County. They're a pretty big film festival. They sometimes take place at King Gillette Ranch as well. They did a drive-in there last year. But they've been doing it for, I think, almost forty-plus years. And then their Toronto Film Festival, Telluride, so we're just kind of copying what other ones were doing. But of course, if LA County said by no means you just have to be fully vaccinated, we would adjust to that and definitely honor that and. You would only have to be vaccinated to attend.
Yeah. I wish you would have been more cautious and just said vaccinated, but I know it's a business decision, but. Wish you best of luck.
Thanks.
Kelly, hi. Is it too late to change to vaccinated only?
No, we haven't printed anything. We haven't put anything on our website.
So I would recommend that if we give this money. And these events are happening in our city, that it's vaccinated only, that would be. The way that I would support giving the funds, especially with. The kind of the big mess that's happening right now with kids and school and just anything we can do to. Encourage vaccination, especially at a Calabasas Film Festival, so that would be my comment.
Happy to do that.
That's great. I think you should, that's a great way to promote it too. I'd be much more comfortable going to a film festival. With social activities, knowing everyone else was vaccinated.
Did you have any comments or not?
Just a quick question, what is the cost of attendance this year?
Just a quick question. What is the cost of attendance this year?
Like before, we've always given our Calabasas residents free administration, as well as we give our sponsors like Calabasas Style, Crusoe and whatnot, a handful of tickets to invite their top clients. But to see a film, it's twelve dollars, and if you wanted to do an all-access pass, it's ninety-nine dollars to come to all five days.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and Mari, I neglected to go to public comment because I didn't see any hands up. Did anyone call in?
There's no hands or no calls, Mr. Mayor.
So, uh. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion to provide the funds to the Calabasas Film Festival with the caveat that it's vaccination is required.
Okay, so the fund, we can't require them to do that, but what we can say is, in order to get the funds, they will have to have that requirement, right?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Kindon, is your hand up? I didn't see it earlier.
And Mayor, this would be outside the motion, so go ahead and proceed with the motion, and then I'll.
So that's the motion. Any other comment, David?
Yes, briefly, just I'd like to follow up, and I don't know if it'd be part of this motion or separate. I would like to support having an event outside at the tennis center as has been recommended or mentioned tonight, if we can include that as part of any, anything we're anticipating. I do support this.
Um.
I thought that was part of the plan to have.
Yeah, I thought he, that was already part of the plan. Has that already been, Kelly, has that already been done, or is it planning?
No, I've been working with Marty and Kindon to make sure that's locked in, but it hasn't been locked in yet.
So, Council, and that was, Mayor, that was one of the things, that's why I raised my hand, is so per the contract right now, the Calabasas Film Festival does have access to the patio area at the Tennis and Swim Center, and I think there's been some type of events planned for the patio area. So this would expand, it would be outside of their, their contract now, but it would expand an opportunity for a full screening at the, at the facility. And Marty and Kelly and I are meeting tomorrow, but we did want to assure Council supported that before we had that meeting as well.
Okay, I think you're hearing support for it. So we'll take the, we'll take the vote on the motion that Alicia made.
Councilmember, Councilmember Kraut?
Yes.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Yes.
Mayor Pret Mauer?
Yes.
Mayor Bosa.
Hi.
Motion carries, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, just to remind the public, September twenty-ninth, October third. Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks so much. Good night.
Good night. Okay. Next, we'll proceed to the Sheriff's Crime Report. Bring back Mason. There he is, hi.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I am Deputy Di Matteo from the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station. I will be presenting the crime report for July twenty twenty-one. So let's get right into it. There were two reports of strong-arm robbery. One of the incidents did occur at a retail establishment. Where a large quantity of retail products were taken. However, these two individuals were apprehended in the Merced area, Northern California, on the same day. The next strong-arm robbery was a home invasion-type robbery. This is where a resident posted an ad on Craigslist trying to sell puppies. They were contacted by two individuals who posed as buyers of these dogs. And when they came to the victim's residence, they forced their way in and stole one of the dogs. There were three assaults. One of them is significant because the victim was punched in the face with brass knuckles at a party. And then one of the other incidents, the victim was punched in the face over a financial dispute. There were two residential burglaries, two burglaries to a garage or an outbuilding. We have five grand theft incidents. These were mostly retail-related. There was one petty theft incident. And there were seven thefts from unlocked vehicles. We also had one stolen vehicle and one arson. And this arson incident in particular involved a person experiencing homelessness, where they had a gas can full of gasoline and a lighter at the bus stop on Agora Road and Lost Hills Road. They spread the gasoline around the bus stop and lit it on fire. But only managed to ignite the gasoline that covered the cement, so there was no damage to any property. This toll brings a total to twenty-four, Part One crimes, with an increase of thirteen percent. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much for the report. Does anyone have any questions or comments? David?
Thank you, thank you, Officer Di Matteo. Just a couple of questions. One, any particular reason you?
David, your sound went off. David, your sound went off.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. I was just saying, any, any idea or basis upon which you might give that we are seeing an increase in more, some more crime, some violent crime in the past months?
Yeah, it's, it's happening all over the country, really. So we're out there doing our best to combat it, and I'm, I'm thinking that this is just a result of everyone coming out of their houses from being cooped up for so long, but I really don't know, so we'll see what happens.
Okay, and, and you may not be able to speak on the, as to these, but I've been asked in the last two and a half days about two particular incidents potentially about a potential, a girl in the community on a bicycle being looked for, and, and and the other was an incident where five vehicles, I, I don't know what sport, were called with, with lights blaring to Hilton Garden Inn. So if you can talk about either of those, if you can't, I understand.
Um, yeah, this month, the Hilton Garden, the Hilton Garden Inn has had some issues lately. Nothing against their business, it's just the people there. There have been several different issues. One I don't really feel comfortable talking about, that I can discuss with you on the side. And that will be brought up at the crime report for August. And in regards to the little girl, that's something that I don't have every detail on, so I don't feel comfortable talking about that, and that is also something we can discuss in the August report.
All right, thank you very much. Be safe and thank everybody for all they do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we will move on. Good evening. Um, okay. Item number thirteen, if we could bring Michael Russo into the room. This is a discussion and consideration of temporarily conducting council hybrid meetings, enabling members of the city council and the public to participate remotely or in person. And Michael, we know that the governor's executive order is set to expire on September thirtieth, although it may be extended. So we have to make some decisions tonight, not knowing that. Michael, you're muted. Okay. Thank you for the report. If you want to just take, give us an overview of where we stand from media operations.
Yeah, from, from a communications department standpoint, we're basically ready to go should you decide to do some sort of a hybrid setup. If you're going to be at City Hall, the public would be at City Hall, or maybe the public wouldn't be at City Hall, just depends on what it is they want to do. But having a hybrid situation would, would allow somebody at another location remotely to not just watch, because they can do that now, you know, they can do that with the television channel as well as the web stream, but to actually participate, public testimony, public comment, that, that kind of thing. So that's the hybrid model, and, and we've tested it, we're set up, we're ready to go. And I guess really at this point, just looking for some sort of direction from council as to when you would want to begin that.
A question for you. The order goes into effect September thirtieth, so obviously you'd be ready for the October meetings. Would you be ready for September twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Okay, if the council decides that.
Yes.
Okay, so those are our options. Um. So who would like to start? Uh, Mary Sue?
So I have a suggestion, a production suggestion. I think that moving to a hybrid will create more work for both the mayor and the city clerk. I've been watching these meetings, and I think that to be able to have to manage both live people getting ready to speak as well as monitoring the screen is too much. I've been at large meetings, and, and the ones that work the best are ones that have facilitators kind of in the background, just getting ready to move people in and out, calling their names, so Mari can do her city clerk business, taking her notes and, you know, managing, running the meeting, and the mayor can be a more active listener and take their own notes. I know for one that, I think that unless you, we consider that we're just gonna have these kind of stalls and it's just gonna be confusing. I really think we need to, and did you think about that, Michael? Actually, maybe you already thought of having someone facilitate all the, the operational side of the meeting.
Very much so. It would, it would generally require somebody likely with the city clerk Mari, as well as somebody from my staff extra to be helping out with, with this. If, let's say, everybody is in chambers, that would mean Mari would be in chambers, and you would need someone from her staff bringing in participants. Someone from my staff bringing in the signal to then be put out on the television channel and the web stream. So it does, it is an increase in resources to do this.
Yeah, I would, I would think so, because again, I've seen two mayors in action doing this. They did remarkable jobs, but when you think about the distractions in the chamber and to have to watch the monitor to see who's there, who's not, who to let in, I think is asking too much. So I'm glad to hear you've thought about that. Thank you.
Okay, Alicia?
Hi, I guess my questions are probably more for Kindon, less Michael, but I just wanted to know what changes have been made to the council chambers to make them COVID-safe? And I want to talk about what the limits of capacity will be, vaccination and testing requirements. I mean, are we going back to hundreds of people? We're talking about a controversial issue, and hundreds of people are in the chambers. So I really kind of want to get a feel for what a return would look like and what that means, because given the conditions today, um, you know, indoor masking, that's really hard for us to be. I mean, we've been going now since six o'clock to be sitting there in a mask indoors for all that time. I mean, I just want to understand what our meetings would look like and the safety precautions.
And thank you, council member. That's a fair question and excellent question. We started this, so I challenged Michael and Mari to start looking into this. Probably, I would say, in May or June to start looking at this, and so we were starting to prepare this when things were opening up again, and things seemed a little bit more loose. So at part of this discussion, we would like feedback from the council that if we were to go to a hybrid meeting setting, what would the council prefer? And we can limit, you know, the capacity in the room. We do have the plastic shields that we could set between, you know, council members. We can make those accommodations as, as we see fit. We'd, we'd like some guidance from the council on that, and what would make you comfortable to do that? And again, if the, if the decision is to stick with Zoom, we're very much okay doing that. We just want a council to know that we're ready and able to do it through the technology and the staff resources when the council's ready to do that.
Okay, well, I don't think we can stick with Zoom because right now the order is going to expire.
That's correct. Every, as Matt mentioned, every indication shows that that will probably extend. Uh, we haven't seen that yet, so we're prepared to do a hybrid, but we think that will extend further past the September thirtieth.
I agree.
That is my expectation as well, although I don't have a crystal ball.
Correct.
Well, I agree with you guys, but because we're not meeting until it would be too late to set something up, we need to just make provision for it tonight. I mean, really, I think the question is, do you want a hybrid meeting, or do you want an all-in-person? And I don't think anyone on the council would be comfortable with an all-in-person, no hybrid. I'm missing something.
No, I definitely want the hybrid option, especially when, say, in a few months, things are better for an all-return. I mean, I think that this format has allowed people who might not otherwise have engaged to engage, so I don't think we should get rid of parts of the hybrid option. But I guess my question is less about the technology, but more about what the setup of the room would be, and capacity, capacity limits, capacity limits, vaccination, all of that.
And so with the first response, we can set up the, a room to just limit the number of seats inside, and then we could also include seats outside in the lobby if there were extra people. One of the ideas that we've discussed as a staff is, those who are presenting a report, city staff, they could still do that remotely. They don't need to be in the room. And so we would encourage, again, just, you know, for those employees, if that fits best with the presentation, just to do that remotely. And one of the conversations that has come through emails was vaccinations at, you know, requiring vaccinations at city facilities. Now, Matt, could we, we talked about a resolution from council, and we could bring that back on the September twenty-eighth special meeting, which would be before this. Could we, could we require vaccinations just for council meetings, and then, or I mean, if the council wanted to, that's not the discussion at this point, but, you know, for all facilities, but specifically for council meetings, could we require vaccinations just for those meetings and proof of vaccination?
Yes, my opinion is that the council has the power to require vaccination to attend a city council meeting in person, provided two things. One, we have an alternate process for people to participate in the meeting. That would mean that if we were to require vaccinations, we'd need to allow comment via Zoom or some other telephone, some other technological method. And two, we would need to, as part of that, look at evaluating, creating in that alternative process medical and religious exemptions, providing another way for people to communicate with the council.
And then what about, like, I mean, masks are required for indoors right now. I mean.
Yes, masks would be required throughout under the current county guidelines, and the city can impose that, too.
For us?
Yeah, that's.
Yes.
Even, even when we're talking.
That's correct.
Some cities have gone back. I know a few cities who came in person in June, and then once the mask mandate came, they went back on, because that's a hard thing to talk for that many hours.
Right. Okay, Mary Sue, you're next.
I, I just wanted to suggest that while we're in this more critical stage, until we reach a certain threshold, that actually people are seated outside the chamber, and that only council members and staff can come down and report and go back up to their office or something. But I prefer not being in circulation with members of the public for hours at a time in an enclosed building. And then setting up the podium outside the chambers as well, and call them either in or to speak, but I really, I want to take this really slowly and keep people separate and apart from each other as well.
Okay, Peter?
Yeah, I'd like to echo a few of those thoughts. I, I would like staff to come to us with a policy requiring vaccination for those attending council meetings in person. Something that we can look at and vote on before that becomes the reality for us. And then I understand the other concerns of wearing masks and having people in the room and stuff. I would suggest that whatever we do, if this order is extended, that we extend the Zoom meetings until such time as we are comfortable back in a room. I mean, it sounds like we're talking about being able to do it come September thirtieth if we have to, but the likelihood is very slim, and it sounds like we're all in agreement that if it's not required September thirtieth, we're not in a rush to get back.
Actually, I'm, I'm not in agreement with that. I would like to have a hybrid regardless. Most councils have been back in session. So we're really behind the curve on that, and as long as there's a hybrid option, including hybrid for council members, I think we should have a physical location. If I'm outvoted, I'm outvoted, but that's my opinion. Yeah, everything else has been said. I Yeah, everything else has been said I can agree with.
I'm ready to come back too, but I do want it taken slowly. And again, I'd rather the public be just outside the chambers with, with, with the TV and like we always do when we have overflow at a minimum.
My fear for the public is in that area. It gets so crowded that, I mean, our, our council chambers are amazing. But they're, they're, it's a crowded space when you have a popular item. I mean, I don't know how many big items we have coming up, but we have, we can't have everyone. I think we're all in agreement. We can't have people on top of each other.
Why not have what we used to have and have it set up in Founder's Hall? We used to have that on very rare occasions when there was a huge item. And you could set up the podium and the camera there.
That's a good idea.
That way they're not crowding the hall.
We could have capacity to, so we have an overflow room so that it, you know, it's half the capacity in the chamber with six feet apart. We're gonna have to count out the chairs and then have overflow and overflow, overflow.
I, I think I, I like the idea of not having the public in the chambers. Why can't we just have them in Founder's Hall?
Do you think people would rather, wait, you're saying, I just want to understand, where would, if people are in Founder's Hall, where would we be?
In the chambers.
Wouldn't people rather just be at their own houses then?
But we have to, if we meet publicly in found, in the chambers, we have to set up an area for the public to come. We can't just have it in chamber unless Matt says otherwise. I think if you're there meeting, you have to invite the public there if they want to come.
Definitely after September thirtieth, right now there's at least one city up north that is running it that way where the public's entirely by Zoom, uh, and the cha- and and, um, this, the city councils and chambers. Uh, but frankly, that particular city found significant public backlash for that setup. So I, I wouldn't recommend it, although it might be legal.
You know, I would caution us also to have vaccinations required to attend a public meeting. I don't know if you've been reading the stories about the backlash in Orange County in particular, um, regarding vaccinations and the public speakers and the threats and it's, it's really volatile out there.
Well, as long as we have a Zoom alternative, we can require vaccinations to come to the city to speak publicly, right, Matt?
Yes.
Okay.
It's more the requirement that we're saying it's entering a city facility.
Well, that's not part of this discussion.
No, but I mean, I was just saying, I guess I was commenting to what Mary Sue was saying, but
But maybe
I just don't see the benefit of us gathering in person if we're not gonna have the public in the same room. Uh, which was why I would suggest we wait until, uh, the restrictions are, are more lenient. Uh, and, and we're more comfortable with more people in the room.
Well, tonight we do have to decide something because we can't just assume that the order will be extended in exactly the way it's extended. It could be even extended and modified. So we have to plan for assuming the order is not extended or not entirely extended in the way it is. So we'll have another chance to do it.
What's the capacity of the chambers?
Uh, council member, I need to find that out. Uh, what I was, I was taking some notes and I, I think the recommendation could be whatever that capacity is, I would say that we would limit capacity to a percentage. That might be twenty percent or twenty-five percent, something that's, you know, very doable to space at chairs out just in that council room, that the chambers, and then use additional, uh, space in the lobby again, whatever the capacity is of that with chairs a- at a certain percentage below.
Well, um, I'm happy to do this. Uh, maybe have a subcommittee, work with staff and empower that subcommittee to make just recommendations and have staff implement a plan assuming that nothing is happening on September thirtieth. No further extension or we don't get the entire extension. But it does have to be decided tonight.
It does. It, it does have to be decided tonight.
Well, yeah, because it, the, the, we don't know with, we don't have a regular meeting in September.
Right. Well, I think we should just go ahead and plan for the hybrid and let staff got a lot of information that we need to do a little bit more work and, uh, we can always pull back. If, if, uh, if, I don't know. I think we need planning time.
Yes, so
Be with a subcommittee, James. Uh, I, I'd be okay with whatever the council members in the subcommittee decide, so I'll relinquish that. Maybe if there's somebody that has more concerns than I do, they can, they can take that role.
Um, okay.
I don't want to be on a task force. I think it can be decided tonight. I mean,
I mean, I'm actually happy with staff making the decisions pursuant to the understanding that the order is expiring September thirtieth. And then we can have the staff even have the September twenty eighth meeting by Zoom and then plan for October. So that if there's any mo- i- if we have a new executive order by September twenty eighth, maybe we put this on the agenda again just to make sure we're in compliance.
I liked your idea, James, of doing September twenty eighth as the dry run because it's a short meeting, won't be too complicated.
Uh, ma- mayor, pretend I will not do that with the housing element. Um, I think that is, I think that runs the risk of problems, especially with some of the, the pending litigation.
Fine.
I would concur with that statement. Uh, I would suggest that it, to sum it up, it might make sense to have um, the mayor and city manager work together to develop, um, implement a hybrid meeting plan for October, um, with adjustments to be made matching the, the concerns expressed tonight if the governor's executive order is extended and if extended, how it's extended. A little flexibility.
Okay, um, Alicia, I see your hand up.
And then at some point when people do come back in, I think we have to like, and staff could figure this out, but you like number the seats and then people have to sign in. So then when and if we'd have to do contact tracing, you would know how to get in touch with people. I think there's just we have to really think out how the meetings will run. COVID protocols, but I know in the schools right now, like seating charts are like a very important thing and just our meetings can go long. So people could be sitting next to each other for hours. So we would just have to be able to have contact information with seat numbers.
David?
Uh, just two cents. If we are going forward with a plan, uh, in let's say October forward, if there is no extension or, uh, serious, more serious outbreaks. Uh, I would support a hybrid option still until such time as we uh, i- if there are orders to that effect. And secondly, I do support what, uh, a number of the council has already indicated would be anyone coming to the council chambers, speaking or presenting at council chambers would be uh, would have to be vaccinated, mandatory vaccination.
And are we, we're prepared to check that, right, Kenan?
Yeah, we could do that. We'd, uh, we'd work with staff to figure out how to do that.
You'd have to, you have to have a staff member check to verify when they come in and Matt would have to prepare a statement on the posted agenda saying that you cannot attend, let, you must show proof of vaccination, has to be noticed. And then telling those people they, they can do Zoom.
Absolutely. We'd also work together to write the right kind of a statement to go with for our city hall, uh, as well. And we'll work with staff to identify the legal, um, the proof. I think we've all seen it. It's the, the card or there's a couple of state issued QR, um, QR code, quick reaction codes, electronic verification also.
Okay, um, is that sufficient direction, Kenan?
Yeah, so council, let me summarize. Um, so the request from council is to limit the number of individuals inside the building. Um, vaccinations would be required to attend. We would, uh, uh, look at all other ways to make it safe, opening doors, whatever we could, space out chairs. We would number chairs and have some kind of a, a signed seating or just, uh, uh, an idea who is sitting where. And then uh, one item of clarification, do we want to allow seating inside the council chambers? Or, and, or just seating in the lobby and then people would come into the podium in the council chambers? Any, any direction on that?
I'd prefer they be outside and we have a contingency plan for overflow into Founder's Hall. I mean, outside the chamber.
Okay.
But you know what, Kenan, really what you need to do is you, in addition to what you've said, is you need to go to see on CDC website and get all the official guidelines for what we need to be doing. I don't think, we shouldn't be just kind of letting us decide.
But I really think the order is gonna be extended.
Yeah, so right now we will plan for a September twenty eighth meeting via Zoom. And we'll be prepared to have something in place for, um, should the order not be extended, we can have an item on that September twenty eighth. Just to discuss or outline how the next meeting in October will be, uh, um, carried out.
We'll just put a placeholder there anyways, because things change from week to week, you know? We don't know. Okay, so we'll move on. Item number fourteen is discussion of the resolutions before the League California Cities Convention. Being your, um, representative, I can tell you about these two resolutions. I mean, really, I don't know why there's always direction that has to be given. Once you have a delegate, we don't give direction to any other subcommittee, but I'm happy to discuss these. One of the problems is most of these resolutions never make it to the floor because they go to a committee first. And I can tell you in the last, maybe Matt would correct me if I'm wrong, in the last three to five years, I don't think a single resolutions made it to the floor. They all get weeded out. Those that do make it to the floor are always amended. So sometimes they're totally different than what's here. But with that caveat in mind, we can go over these if you'd like. The first, uh, the first one go in order. The first one is the online sales tax equity. It's very complicated, but in a nutshell, um, for online tax sales, the money is pooled, the one cent that each city gets is pooled by county and then divided up. It's not divided by where the actual point of sale is. So what this would do is equalize that a little bit more and divide it up by where the actual transaction is. The problem with this resolution, I mean, it's very equitable, so I'm inclined to support it. The problem is, I don't know, I don't have any, uh, knowledge of how that affects Calabasas in particular, whether we're better off under the old system or the new system. Kenan, do, have we, do we have any clue as to that?
Yeah, so my best, um, uh, understanding of this is it, it really is targeted toward some of these big distribution centers. Your Amazon, your Walmart, your other big distribution centers that would, uh, create this equalizing effect and share some of those tax revenues. Because Calabasas doesn't have any of those, um, we wouldn't lose. I, I, I don't think we'd see any leakage of sales tax. We might, um, um, see some benefits and I don't know, for example, Harbor Freight that has headquarters here, uh, but, uh, some of their, you know, I don't think we see their point of sales here. Uh, I don't think that would be affected, but it might be just based on, uh, some of that, uh, some of those changes.
And of course, anytime we do become a distribution center, if somebody buys a warehouse and, or a building and converts it to that, then the whole equation changes. So it's very hard to estimate.
You know, it's really hard to vote on legislation in this kind of setting with just a, a, a short report and, and with all due respect, James, you're the best at synthesizing, but I'm, I'm gonna be abstaining on these because this isn't how I I think we gotta come up with a system where we treat any piece of legislation that any of us thinks is good for the city that comes before us with some kind of template and baseline information.
Well, th- this isn't brought by me. This is a city, this is Rancho Cucamonga who, that requested this.
I know, but you're bringing it to us on behalf of the league that you represent, like
No, I didn't put this on the agenda. I mean, this was put on the agenda pursuant to our policy. I'm happy to go and do the research and vote accordingly, what I think is best for the city, but you know, I, I just don't I don't know why the league is singled out as the one where we have to order the delegate to, to vote on a certain way. I mean, I'm not ordered on the community center votes and no one's ordered on SCAG or any of the other votes. So why is the lea- the league delegate ordered? I mean, it doesn't make much sense to me, but
When you say ordered, you mean ordered to come before your colleagues here and
Right. I mean, it, we don't, we don't go through each agenda, each subcommittee and say, well, what's coming up on the agenda? You're to vote this way or you're to vote this way. We trust whoever the delegate is to do what's best for the city.
Then why are you here?
I'm here because the council has asked for this to be agendized in the past. I'm happy to just go and vote what I think is best for the city. This one probably has a very little net effect on, on Calabasas. And I'm not even sure it's gonna make it to the floor, as I said. David, your hands up.
You've said most of what I was gonna say. It's something I've said before. You go there, you're knowledgeable, whoever the delegate is, I've been the delegate once or twice. Uh, if there's something very important for the city, I think it's incumbent upon the delegate to bring it up and we can discuss it or let us know. Other than that, I trust your judgment. I think we all do. And I support your evaluating and voting appropriately for the city.
And just a second one is just, uh, it doesn't affect Calabasas at all because it involves cleaning up railroad facilities that have been damaged or graffitied or have obstructions on them, which we don't have.
Use your best judgment, James.
Yes, use your best judgment, James.
All right, I'll report back to you. Um, then we have city council consideration of a letter of opposition regarding Assembly Bill two fifteen two. Kenan, did you want me to do this?
Yes, uh, mayor, if, if you'd like to handle this one, this is, uh, just as outlined, it's, uh, uh, I'll let you go ahead.
This, the effect of this would be for the state to allow outside attorneys, including developers, attorneys and building industry and who of special interest groups to bring enforcement actions against cities regarding the housing element and the arena numbers. That's what this would do. It would be very negative. The league is taking a formal position against I don't know any cities that have taken a position in favor. This is basically would open the floodgates to a number of litigation items against cities like Calabasas whenever a private party was unhappy with something. And they would have the, the in, backing of the state basically. Normally it would be the state that's required to bring the action.
And then one additional point I'll note is that it also creates a process for this to happen outside the standard eight-year housing element review cycle.
Which I, I believe yesterday or the day before that was taken out.
It was amended, perfect.
I heard that, I heard that earlier today. I have not had a chance to go online and verify, but the league told me that.
Understood. And I shouldn't say not perfect, um, less bad.
Less bad. They still, they did not withdraw their opposition.
No, they did not.
Mayor, in the hopes of being done by eleven o'clock, can I make a motion that we, uh, move to a uh, oppose this, uh, and, and draft the letter as, as indicated here?
Okay, is there a second?
Second, no.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Yes.
Mayor Tim Bauer?
Aye.
Mayor Will Sajin?
Aye.
Thank you. And I should note that I've been watching and not seeing any, uh, raising in hands for public comment. Um, all right, informational reports, you have the check register. There's no question about that. We'll go to task force reports. Anybody with task force report? Okay, uh, just to remind everybody, California Contract Cities Association Convention, September sixteenth to nineteenth, League of California Cities, September twenty second and twenty fourth. And the JPI conference, we're not attending.
Are you doing future agenda items? Are you doing future agenda items?
What?
Are you doing future agenda items?
Uh city manager's report.
Well.
All right, council, just uh two items very quickly. Um as I announced in an email to you. Uh we have uh selected a community services director. Erica Green, uh currently with the City of Moreno Valley, who will be starting October fourth, and so we look forward to welcoming her. And uh her talents and um uh political acumen and and strength that she'll bring to the department. Uh second, uh as council is aware, we did in implement a vaccination policy uh for city staff. And contractors here at City Hall volunteers. This is not a perfect policy. This is a first start. Um we will be rolling this out and will probably be seeing a a further tightening of this. Over the next few weeks internally as we look at this. Uh to go more towards just the pure vaccination, but I do want to know that I I've heard your concerns about what we've done. Uh and we are looking at ways to change it now. We will roll out this initial step and then go from there. But thank you for your comments so far.
Future agenda items? David?
Thank you. Um I brought this up before and I think it was going to go. To a commission or possibly come forward at a future meeting. But I didn't see it on the fut- I don't see it on the future agenda, although maybe I missed it. Uh I, we are in the midst of yet again, an ongoing and and very. Serious drought in California, and I would like us to get ahead of this. Any way possible we can by be being creative, taking steps. I'd like to have Mike or or David or someone from the Water District come to a meeting. Give us uh their si- their suggestions there, what they are doing and have us come up with some. Uh creative suggestions in our city properties in our community, what we can do to help. Uh moving forward to get ahead of this as best we can. We're already behind the eight ball, but at least we can do something about it.
Okay, we'll add that to future agenda item, Kenan.
Got it.
Mary Sue?
Well, I was going to say the exact same thing, David, and we got some clarity when we had a little discussion um email. Uh the city manager can make um declarations with. You know, on city property and Kenan, you and I talked about this and it sounds like you're gonna do that, I think. Fifteen percent is what they're recommending. We don't even need the Water District in here to tell us that. But to do, to ask or, and it's all voluntary right now. If we're talking about making our residents. Cut back. The state hasn't even done that. The county hasn't even done that. Um but that's voluntary too at this point at fifteen, so. I don't know if we need to agendize it. I think we could just move forward with. Rolling back our water, but if we need to agendize it, I don't know why we would, but the states are gonna. About to declare something, so those are my comments. And then. You all know that we um proudly, the City of Calabasas tried to get a regional climate change um grant going and couldn't get traction at the COG or at the individual cities at this time. Hopefully in the future. Um we have fifty thousand dollars that we've set aside. I'd like to put a an agenda item on. It's been on there since February. It goes all the way back to twenty fourteen. That I've had climate change and and I've had. And and so uh Kenan and I talked today is day one. Of the city's restart and getting a climate change effort underway, so. Um I want, it's there on the agenda and. I I think maybe what we could talk about is the allotment of the fifty thousand or allow the city manager to. Look at um hiring a consultant. I don't know if we have to put that on the agenda, but. Talk about behind the eight ball. We are. Um losing traction, so um and then lastly, I really would like to see us add a couple dates in early part of next year to align with. The city manager's recommendations that we have at least two budget workshops. Um so and then also a visioning um workshop of some sort. Um that would mean an extra few meetings next year rather than waiting till the end or when we're closer and we're scrambling for who's available, what dates. So if Wendy Wednesdays are good for everyone, unless there's an objection, I'd like to ask. Um that you consider that or that the city manager picks some dates. That's it.
Alicia?
Um, we're getting. The usual complaints about traffic around our school areas. But it's really intense out there right now and some of our local private schools haven't um even gotten back yet, so. We've had these like school area traffic safety meetings, but I don't even know if we necessarily. Need that. We received an email today. Um I sent to Robert and Kindon from Bay Laurel, but I just wanted to know, I guess it would be like our school subcommittee. If we can meet with staff and maybe I know staffing resources are short, but if. I would love for staff to go out and see our roads at school pickup time. And drop off time, but especially pickup time and then maybe work with the sheriff or secure all, but. I worry that if there's an emergency, we're not even going to be able to get some emergency vehicles down our main roads during these hours, so. If we can just work on that, um. I don't even know, I'm, it's late, but what the item would be, but if you can just put like school area traffic and we can survey each school site, so we can always make improvements.
Okay, Peter?
Yeah, just a reminder, at our last meeting, we uh we brought up the topic of uh safe parking. For people experiencing homelessness and uh that doesn't seem to be on the future agenda list. So we get that on there somewhere too?
Yes, and and councilman, our request, our thought was that we would bring that back to the task force uh for recommendations. Uh and then bring it to the council, but if you'd like to. Just go straight to council, we could do that as well, either.
I'd rather do, I thought we were going to meet as a subcommittee.
That's what I thought was.
Let's do it with the task force, but yeah, there was other other items on the future agenda list that are going to commissions as well, so I just didn't want to lose track of it.
Got it.
Okay, Mary Sue.
James, I'm sorry, when Alicia said task force, I I remembered why I want, what I wanted with climate change. It wasn't only just to get. Maybe a consultant, um but also a task force. I mean, we have a task force for almost everything we've. I I'd like to see us have a task force on climate change. To keep it moving down the track, so if that needs to be on the agenda. Uh that should be a very short item and I'd appreciate it being. Um. On the, on the next agenda.
Creation of a, creation of a task force?
A climate cha- climate, climate action plan task force.
Okay, so that will go on October.
Thank you.
One of the two Octovers. I I haven't looked at the two yet.
It'll be quick. I hope.
All right, anything else under future agenda items? All right, in that case, we will adjourn to a special meeting on Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one seven PM. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.